Thank you. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice is advertised in the Asbury Park Press and Beacon, was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise for the flag allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Only item on the caucus tonight is best practice checklist.
All right, so annually, the township of Lacey is required, in accordance with state law, to submit what's known as a best practices inventory checklist. It's on various different subjects and items with regards to personnel, budgeting, best practices, contractual matters, building and zoning matters, and it depending on how a town scores depends on whether or not they get 100% of their state aid. I am pleased to say that we scored with over 37 points, which means that we've maintained our $11.1 million that we receive from the power plant. So it has been submitted. I just have to make notification to the governing body that myself and the CFO have submitted the checklist.
Thank you.
Anything else? Do we have anybody have an add-on or anything?
You have.
Okay. Motion to close the meeting.
Move it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and Beacon, was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise for the flag and a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me. Second reading of the ordinance 2023-28, amending chapter 269 to create new section 11 entitled "Do Not Knock Registry."
Ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter 269, section 7, entitled "Permit Fees: Expiration of Permits, Hours of Sale," amending section 11 entitled "Violations and Penalties" to create new section 11 now entitled "Do Not Knock Registry," and amending and supplementing chapter 269 with new section 12 now entitled "Violations and Penalties." Second reading, open the floor to public comment.
Public have any comments here this evening?
Seeing now, motion to close the floor.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Pardon me. Second reading of ordinance 2023-29, amending chapter 323 to provide an additional stop and yield intersections.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter 323 of the township code of the Township of Lacey entitled "Vehicles and Traffic," so as to designate stop intersections within the Seabreeze at Lacey community. Second reading, open the floor to public comment.
Public have any comment here this evening?
Seeing now, motion to close the floor.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion?
Second.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2023-30, authorizing the grant of a conservation restriction easement.
An ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the grant of a conservation restriction easement on block 1900, lot 2. Second reading, open the floor to public comment.
Does the public have any comment this evening?
Seeing now, motion to close the floor.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-303, authorizing the appointment of a clerk for the Department of Community Development.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appointing Anne Marie Sherry to the position of clerk in the Department of Community Development for the Township of Lacey.
Second.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-305, authorizing a change order to the contract with Stanley Construction and Roofing Incorporated.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending a contract with Stanley Construction Roofing under the terms and conditions of the community development block grant to provide a housing rehabilitation program. This would be an increase in the contract of $6,044.50.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-306, authorizing the placement of a lien on block 1405, lot 9.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning the costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of a property located on Lane Place, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs. This is block 1405, lot 9, in the amount of $175.57.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-307, authorizing a refund of deposit monies.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes from October 12, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Motion to approve the township meeting minutes from October 12, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Abstain.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Motion to approve raffle license for the Women's Club of Lacey, Lacey Township High School Booster Association, VFW Post 10118, and Lenoka Harbor Elementary PTO.
Move it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve in the Forker River Voluntary Fire Company for Zachary Gusti? Gusti?
Move it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve junior membership in Lenoka Harbor Voluntary Fire Company for Leah, oh boy, Milkowski.
Move it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any add-ons?
No.
All right. Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor Kennis?
I attended a lot of events, but I'm going to hold my comments for now. The only thing I will mention is, I know a number of people here from Bayfront Park, I did walk Bayfront Park. I haven't done that in probably a while, but I did walk Bayfront Park, so I just want to... The people here that are for that issue, I did visually inspect, so those are my comments.
Mrs. Juliano?
I'm going to hold most of my comments too, Mayor, but I will agree, I walked the park today myself, so I'll, I have, you know, we'll speak about that as we go along.
Sure. Karim and Dykoff?
Get up.
Okay. Karim and Cortolo?
Yeah, I spoke to Director of Public Works, and I'll withhold my comments as well, Mayor.
Very good. I too walked the, I was down there the other day, actually took pictures of it at Bayfront Park, and I'm going to hold my comments for later. Okay. Comments from the public? This young lady right here in the black.
No address. Just so you know, you can't tell us your address anymore, just your name. My name is Sandra Arnold. Okay? Oh, okay. My husband and I are new to Lacey Township, only here one year, so please bear with me as I'm just getting up to speed on the maintenance situation at Bayfront Park and the pathway that leads from it past the front of our property. We built our home for our retirement, we live here year-round, we are not adding kids to the school, we're barely adding cars to the road as I work from home, we're contributing a good amount of tax revenue, and we want to be good community neighbors, and we like so much of what we see Lacey Township has to offer, which is why we moved here. We lived in our previous town for 26 years, and never once did I stand in front of the township committee. So bear with me as I read from my notes.
Take your time.
Thank you. I realize that many citizens, including myself, don't fully understand how, and more importantly, why the decisions are made by the township committee on behalf of the citizens, and I know you will never make everyone happy. I do appreciate the time and effort you're all putting in here, and I do thank you for that, and for listening. I'm hoping that you can educate us as to what is happening with the mowing and clearing on the Gabion wall along the path. I understand that the plan is to address the larger maintenance concerns in the spring as to the situation with the terrapin habitats and the overgrowth. I watched several turtles actually find their way from the bay through the turtle tubes in June and onto a sandy spot on my neighbor's property, and they buried their eggs. We placed cages over those areas on the advice of Dr. Winnick from the Project Terrapin. We patiently watched and protected them, but we never saw anything hatch. And if they did, in my opinion, come August, there was very little chance they would have found their way back to the turtle tubes to get to the water to survive because of all the overgrowth. You couldn't even see the tubes, let alone get through the weeds to reach them. So I understand the plan is to consult experts possibly to evaluate if there is a better solution and have a bigger community discussion. I also understand the DEP is involved, and you're following their direction. I do hope Dr. Winnick will be part of those discussions in the spring. As from my research, he was the driving force to include protections for the terrapin habitat when the park renovation permits were issued. I look forward to those discussions in the spring because I don't feel that what is currently happening makes a lot of sense to protect the terrapins, as was stipulated in that CAFR permit. So my concern tonight is that I attended a township meeting on September 14th, and my neighbor asked if the grass would be mowed after October 15th, and you all adamantly shook your head absolutely yes. We were happy, satisfied with that, and no further issue. October 15th comes, we patiently wait, but no cutting. Tuesday this week, the crews were out, and they were cutting around the park entrance and around the playground, but they didn't come down the path. I have this code enforcement letter stating the mowing is allowed after October 15th, and it's my understanding that that's what happened every year prior to this year. So I did watch the video from last township meeting, and I heard Mr. Cortolo voiced your opinion in favor of mowing, and for good reasons, including public health concerns. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of eight of the 10 neighbors who live directly on the path, who would like to see the mowing and the clearing of the Gabion wall. That was in the plan, that had happened every year up until this year. So can you explain to me now why we're not mowing the path and clearing the growth on the Gabion, and did something change in the ordinance?
Certainly. There's been some other people who said they don't want it cut, as you know, and we just haven't made up our mind yet. The permit allows us to cut from October 15th to, I think, May 1st or something like, June 1st or something like that. Doesn't say that we have to. So we haven't really made up our mind about how we want, how we really want to handle this. I will tell you this, I was down there, my opinion is that we cut this thing. The New Jersey permit allows us to do that, I think it should be done. The question is, how many times do we do it in October, and then do we do it again in May, or do we do it just say maybe in May and let it grow for that whole year? It's going to be tough. And the other part of this is, we do not want to lose that walkway, and we got to be very careful about losing that walkway, because it's really not that wide. And it's, you know, I was down there with my wife the other night, so we got to be careful. We have to figure this all out. So as to if it's going to be cut or when it's going to be cut, we have to decide that.
So, but we just don't understand why, you know, why we can't, you know, this is part of this bigger discussion that I feel like, you know, we need to address because we also have, you know, the terrapins, and I've talked about that, but, you know, this is, you know, views, this is invasive species that are growing in those areas now with the phragmitis, things that are not good for that area. So it is a bigger discussion, it's a huge discussion, but I feel like right now, in this moment, why can't we just get this first mowing in October?
Because we haven't really made up our mind, how, do we do it, do we want to do it in October, or do we want to do it just in the springtime and let it grow for the whole year? It is something that's come, this comes up every couple of years, and we never really, we never really get a good policy on it, because you're up here saying, yeah, cut it, and then I guarantee you, we've had people come over that, don't cut it.
No, and I understand that.
And our problem is, we're trying to please everybody, and we're not pleasing anybody at this point in time.
Right.
So we have to make a decision here.
Right.
That, and hopefully we can stick to it.
Okay, so when is that discussion going to happen?
I don't know. I mean, we're going to have to talk amongst ourselves.
Can I ask who's in favor of the cut?
I'm hoping to decide tonight.
It's going to be decided tonight.
Yeah. Let's decide tonight.
We've put it on our agenda to take care of a decision on this tonight.
Yeah. So hopefully, hopefully.
Okay, so I hope I stated my case here.
Hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully.
And I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. This young lady over here, yes?
The funny bone on your head.
Okay, okay, I'll get that.
It wasn't funny.
Just state your name, please.
Hi, I'm Donna Brophy, and like Sandra said, I really appreciate everyone's time and concern for this area, and you've been listening to me, I've come to numerous meetings. I came last year voicing the same concerns at the, in September, and I was here when the grass was cut, when you had a group of people who said, "My heart's breaking because I walk down the path now, and the grass has been cut." But they don't live there 24 hours a day. I work remotely as well, I have the views every day, we have to deal with the rodents. I saw a dead mouse there the other day, the trash that accumulates in the grass, it's the bugs. The neighbor down the way had said that he was out on Labor Day, and he and his friends had to go inside because of all the bugs. So I've been following this with you since last year. I've been attending the meetings, like Sandra said, in September, and the one meeting we don't attend, everything changes. So where's the faith here? You're our representatives, and we didn't attend the one meeting, and all of a sudden everything's changing. Veronica, I've been in touch with you as well, and I just feel like one group on a night when we're not here to represent changes the whole process, which really doesn't feel right to me.
I think we just put a stall on it.
Yeah, we didn't change that, we just said...
But we were under the impression, October 16th.
I get that. We just said, let's hold off on that. We're going to, according to my committee members, we're making a decision tonight, and that's going to be the final decision until next year.
Well, I understand, I mean, to at least finish up what you started for this year in the spring, we're all in favor of let's have a bigger discussion. We're not against that.
Right, no.
But let's be fair and be honest and say, let's finish up what we started.
I would, I do want to say this. I'm going to tell your neighbors, do not cut our, the township property, because there's DEP regulations, and I know some people are out there, they cut it. The letter went out from Veronica, I believe, about cutting it.
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement sent out a letter. The next time it happens, there's going to be a fine. So let the public works people do their job as cutting it. If you want to cut your own property and your own boundaries, have at it, but the Lacey Township property, please don't do it, because you will get fined.
And I've been in talks with Rob in charge of Public Works, he's been amazing. He came out two months before, told me this is all getting cleared, and then, you know, I saw him again this week, ran up to him, you know, what's happening? And, you know, he told me that you did allow the perimeter, which, you know, you certainly need for the, you know, the cleanliness and the safety of the children who are in that area and all of that, but, yeah, no, I just, I'm in favor of the cutting through the year, and let's revisit this come the spring.
Okay. Thank you very much. These two ladies down here, yes?
The three of these come on.
Three, three, okay. Three young, three young ladies.
They think we were here for lunch.
Exactly. They were Bernie Snyder.
I thought they were talking. Here, you read it, you read it.
Hi, I'm Jenai Pico, Lakeside Drive. This is on behalf of the Rees Across America. We're here again to ask if you could possibly help us with the road department and...
Yes. You don't even have to, you don't even have to ask.
We're at least simple.
Don't even have to.
Put the appetite, put the information out, so these people, if anybody chooses to get on...
Okay, so what we're doing is Good Luck Cemetery, the Rees Across America, we're making sure every veteran out there gets a refund or a grade. We have over 475, 480 right now. If anybody would like to donate, you could go on to Rees Across America and go into Good Luck Cemetery on Lenoka Harbor and help us get all the rees that we need to get all these veterans today. And the date is December 16th, all the way across the United States, it happens at 12:00, we have a ceremony. If anybody is looking to volunteer, we could use the help. So we hope this...
We have to show up.
Yep, just give us a hand, and we'll get one on everybody that...
When are the rees arriving?
That is the question that we answer. We don't have that answer. They call us when that tractor leaves Maine.
Right.
And they let us know when they're going to be here.
Okay.
So they might give us two days' notice, which I'll reach out to everybody.
Thank you.
It all worked out. They did a fabulous job last year, DPW and the police, everybody, it was great. You guys worked great together, it was fantastic.
And so December 16th at Good Luck Cemetery?
At Good Luck Cemetery, 12 p.m.
All right.
Come back again in November, just to keep reminding, okay?
Definitely.
Bernie, what do you have to say?
Thank you.
Is it all right with you, Veronica?
Sure.
I wanted to introduce Jenai Pico. She was at our veterans meeting the other night.
I believe last year at this meeting, we put her on the veterans committee.
Yeah. What a terrific job she did with the Rees, her and our daughter and...
The whole crew.
Yeah. They were terrific, and it really brought to light the situation, and good luck with the veterans that are there. It was very enlightening.
It was a beautiful event, wasn't it?
Yes.
And there was people that had moved out of town and came back for it.
Yep.
So it was, it was very, very good, it was terrific. Do you want me to continue on?
Sure.
Peggy Sue, you're first. I heard you missed me at a meeting.
Yes, I did.
Yeah.
I wanted you to come and tell everybody that you were happy, that we, I hope we satisfied you in the move that we're, you know, making, I hoped.
Oh, no, you did. I was going to thank you, I just couldn't make that meeting, but I sure intended to come and say something.
Well, because people were still asking me, and then there was a sign posted that we threw the veterans to the street, you know, so I wanted to, I wanted to make sure people knew we didn't throw them to the street, you know.
No, that was stopped. That was... Mayor, you're next.
Uh-oh.
Last meeting, you called me a liar about the Methodist church, and I just want to clear the air on it.
How was a couple of meetings back?
Two meetings back.
Okay.
Right? You were right, and I was right.
Okay.
So it's offsetting penalties in neither of us.
Okay, it's a toss-up.
It was $40 a day, which you were, I was going by the usual stay for a homeless veteran there is a week, which is $150, and that's what I said.
All right, no problem.
All right. No apology needed, I know you make mistakes, it's...
Next time I see you, I'll buy you a beer.
Guinness.
Okay, not a problem, not a problem.
Next guy's Pete. Last meeting, you come out with some figure of $6,664. That was utter, utter BS. I don't know where you got it from, I don't know if somebody fed it to you, and you were the speaker, I can't believe that you come up with that yourself.
Well, that was about 35 years, had a certain figure each month.
Yeah, let me give you a little history. Let me give you a little history lesson. We weren't the only ones in that house for the last 35 years. Right, Veronica?
You are 100% correct.
Chamber of Commerce was in there up until COVID hit. Before that, the Municipal Alliance was in there. Before that, I believe it was the Jay-Zs were in there for a short period of time before they folded, and there was one other...
Well, Emergency Management was there for a short period, and then the Recreation Offices who shared the upstairs.
Yeah, he was there, Kil Murray was upstairs.
Yeah, because I was still working for Recreation at that time.
All right, and then also, was it Emergency Management, I believe?
Very short period of time, yes.
They were in there for a short period of time. So to, you know, lay the blame on us for $6,664...
Bernie, I've been your liaison for over a decade, I think I missed two meetings, one the other night, because I did have a meeting in Stafford Township, and you and I, I think, have been pretty close.
Yeah.
And I always constantly remind, I am a civilian servant of yours, because I didn't fight, I just pushing a pencil. I say I was a student, I know my place next to our veterans. So I wanted to discuss this with you, and we probably should have done it over the phone, but, yeah, I put a number on for 35 years, because I saw some things that were posted, I thought they were unfair after the way the five of us have been trying to help, and to say that this patriotic committee would, and you're one of our police officers too, and you know I love you, Bernie, and I don't blow sunshine. So I was a little, I was a little hurt and taken back, but I will take it from you, because I think you have more of a right to speak than I do.
I was more hurt with what the committee was doing to us.
We just needed time, and like Committeeman Juliano said...
I don't want to open a can of worms, it's over.
It's, we've got your house.
I just, I'm getting tons of, I'm getting tons of phone calls from fellow veterans out there... that are telling me to clean, clear the air.
Okay.
And the history lesson is when we first moved into that place, I don't know, were you here then?
Mm-hmm.
When we moved in there, that place sat empty. The Township Committee came to us and asked the Veterans Commission, which used to meet downstairs, to move in there to make it look like somebody was in there because the other political party in town was raising hell about moving the house there and it's sitting empty and you did nothing with it. Not you personally, but the committee at the time did nothing with it. It sat empty. The committee moved in there, the Veterans Committee moved in there. It still wasn't being that between us and the Chamber of Commerce and even the Recreation. Jake was working days in the school and at nights he was down there. We were using it at nights. They came back to us and wanted somebody to use it during the day. We had, Vet Work was in a trailer next door to it. And the idea was, which was Tom Oskovic's idea, why don't we invite them? And he cleared it at the time through the Township Attorney, who was Honest George, right?
It was Mr. Gilmore, I believe.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Honest George.
That wasn't Fall 4.
That's on Fall 4.
That's not Fall 4 Bernie. Don't lower yourself like that.
I apologize.
You should apologize.
All right.
Okay.
The, they moved in to downstairs and the Chamber of Commerce was downstairs. So it looked like people were in that house like 16 hours a day and it was being used to take the heat off the Township Committee. You know, we didn't beg to go in there. We were doing the Township Committee a favor by moving in there. The problem is that the history here, you know, I only knew one committee man, I think, and that was Nick, God rest his soul, that used to stop in there at least every other week. And he wasn't even on the Veterans Committee then, but he'd stop in and ask us what was going on, what are you doing? And we brought him up to date on everything. He told us when this thing was coming about, about getting rid of the community hall and the Warden House, that he was going to make sure we either got in to the old library there or the old MUA or the food bank, that he was going to make sure that happened. You know, when you came out with the food, you know, it was funny about the food bank. You wouldn't tell me where we were moving last meeting. I got up and I walked over there and down to the back corner and two people told me where we were going. It wasn't a secret. I don't know why we got to keep secrets.
It wasn't about a secret. It just hadn't been approved yet, so we wanted to make sure it was, everything was approved.
So what? You can say, hey, it's been approved, but here's where you're going.
Bernie, we acted as quickly as we could and for the last decade, at any time you called me, an hour later, I would email 15 different veterans from the commission, take notes when you spoke. I said, "On behalf of Chairman Snyder, I brought it back to this committee dutifully. Anything that the veterans needed, I've done. I could not invent a place for you. I only have 20% of this vote and this is a committee form of government." We acted as quickly as, I hope you're happy with the outcome because we do love you.
Oh, we are.
It's not political.
But it was, I don't want to open a can of worms of what happened before.
Let me just say that. The thing that bothered me the most, and Bernie, I've known you a long time, is that you guys didn't pick up the phone and ask for a meeting to discuss this. You just came up to a meeting and kind of just, and let us have it. And all I wish is, and I wish, go ahead. If you have a problem with the Township Committee as the vets, give us a call, set up a meeting. We'll sit down and talk it out. It's as simple as that.
I said Nick was keeping us up to date.
Well, okay.
He came to one of our meetings and he filled us in on what the committee was doing. And we were concerned about where we were going.
Okay.
It wasn't like we didn't call or we didn't communicate with you. I think Peggy, you even said you wanted to come to a meeting.
Well, you and I had spoken a couple of times, so yes.
There wasn't a lack of communications on our side. I would have thought that you would have called us and said, "Hey, pack your bags. You're moving over here. You're going," and give us a heads up. You know, you're basically the landlord.
Well, I did stop down there right after Veronica and I met with the new owner of the property down there because he said he was going to move very quickly. And I did stop down there and I said, you know, "Just be prepared." And they said, "What's the date?" And I said, "I'm pulling this out of thin air. I'm thinking October 1st." We now know that's not going to be true. But again, my going point was if you have a problem with this Township Committee or anything about it, pick up the phone, give Veronica a call, give Amy a call, she'll set up, she'll set up the meeting and whoever the members ever sitting in this hot seat, we'll meet with you. It's not a big deal.
Tim, you and I talked on the phone.
We did. We did.
And I really don't think we ought to be hashing this out.
Okay.
You know?
We can do it over a beer.
It's like water over the dam now.
Okay. All right.
Bernie, did you want to say anything about November 11th as far as the service goes?
Yes, it was November 11th, Veterans Day. We're having the ceremony here at the monuments next door, 11 o'clock on the 11th. Everybody is welcome.
Is it Saturday this year, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's Saturday.
Yes. We usually have a good showing, but it'd be nice to have a little showing.
Usually it's about 50 or 60 people show up for that. Make it nice.
And we'll close down Lacy Road again so we can get rid of the traffic of the vehicles.
Yes.
Because you can never hear any noise.
Oh, yeah. And it's only for like 15 or 20 minutes.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Thank you Bernie.
Okay. Thank you Bernie.
Thanks for putting up. Anybody else? Hold, I'll get to you. This gentleman right here. Yep, you bet. This gentleman, I guess that's pink shirt, pinkish shirt, whatever.
Good evening everybody.
Just state your name, not your address, please.
My name's Tom Kohler. I live in town here. It's okay. I'd like to give each of you something.
Sure.
I've lived in town about the last 35 years. Kids went through the Lacy Township schools, plumbing, heating, air conditioning, and electrical contractor in town all that time. I go to health, I've been for about 10 years.
Thank you.
Did some division in Lacy.
That's all right.
I hold all the licenses that are necessary.
You forgot a third.
Construction official position, which was advertised on the Civil Service website in, I believe in August. I'm a U.S. Navy veteran with the Expeditionary Medal, which places me in the Civil Service with the Veterans Preference Status. Lacy Township historically has had the friendliest building township, building department that anybody involved with building could ever ask to deal with. Started with Frank Crandall 30 some years ago. Doug took over. Doug pretty much kept things in keeping with how Frank Crandall used to run things. Doug very unexpectedly left and somebody was provisionally appointed to that position. The person in that position is brutalizing contractors, homeowners. I know of a senior lady who she went out to do an inspection for and she noticed that she didn't have a backflow preventer on her sprinkler system. Poor old lady had no idea she didn't have a backflow preventer on her sprinkler system. She threatened this old lady with a $2,000 fine, scared the bejesus out of the senior. This isn't who we want representing Lacy Township, going out and dealing with our homeowners and our contractors. I'm certain each of you on the board here have heard from the builders telling you how they're being treated. The Lacy Moose has a pavilion dedicated to Nick Giuliano. She has shut that pavilion down. She's, she called it an unsafe structure. There's a building permit for constructing that pavilion. There's inspections saying that pavilion was inspected. A month or so ago, she said she wanted a letter from an engineer and an architect stating that the structure was safe. They conformed and did what she asked. They have a letter from an architect, a letter from an engineer stating that the structure is safe. She shut it down, saying she deems it an unsafe structure. I'm sorry, but the architect and the engineer's license is very much trump a construction official's license. She said she won't allow it to reopen without exterior bathrooms being built. There's two sets of men's and ladies bathrooms 15 feet away inside the structure. She says she wants bathrooms built and the structure is unsafe till it gets bathrooms. I don't think she has the authority to do that. She holds a plumbing subcode official license, construction official license. I hold a construction official license, plumbing subcode official license, and electrical subcode official license. The job so far has only been provisionally appointed. If I was to get that position, I would restore things to the way Frank Crandall ran things. I would make sure all work was done in a good, safe and code compliant manner, but that would be accomplished in the most friendly way possible. Right now, I'm inspecting up in, I'm the electrical subcode official in Home Del Township. If I have to fail something, which happens, I don't ever use the word fail. I say to a homeowner or a builder or whatever, "Look, I'm sorry, I can't pass this. Here's what you have to do. Here's my cell number and if you get it done today, I'll come back today." That's the way Frank Crandall used to run things and that's the way I use his words all the time. He used to show up on the job and he'd say, "We're here to help." Well, I steal his words all the time. I hope he doesn't get mad at me for it, but I say to people, "I'm here to help. I'm not here to give you a hard time. It has to be good. It has to be safe. It has to be code compliant, but I will help you do that in any way I can." So I'm hoping each person on this committee is aware that there is somebody who was applied for this position when it was advertised through the Civil Service Commission. Person is a veteran with Veterans Preference Status because of my Navy Expeditionary Medal and I have all the credentials and then some. Anybody have any questions for me?
I think you need to reach out to Civil Service with regards to the list because the list was issued and there's only one name on the list.
I have an email from them saying that the list would be given to you within two weeks.
It is and I got it this week and there's one name on the list.
What is the name?
It's the current person in the position.
Something's very wrong because that would be addressed certainly.
You need to take that up with Civil Service.
I can show you the emails that I have from them.
Well, I didn't, I don't generate the list. You guys do what you do and you apply like you did by August 21st.
You were aware.
There were two names that were submitted on the list, two applicants. One was accepted, one was rejected. That's what I get on the list. So you have to take that up with the state of New Jersey.
You were very aware that you applied for the position.
Yeah, I was very aware of that. You filed it all with me and let me know.
Right.
But I don't generate the list. The state of New Jersey does.
I can show you the emails going back and forth between me and the Civil Service Commission. Originally, there was an error. I was rejected, the veteran status, I made a mistake. I assumed that the Civil Service Commission could plug my social security number into their system.
Yeah, it doesn't work that way.
I learned that.
Yeah.
And it has been corrected.
But they did generate a list this week and your name is not on the list. So you need to go back to them then if they made an error. There's nothing we can do as a town.
I will be on the phone with them tomorrow because they have been very helpful with me.
Yeah, they're very good, yes.
Basically, when I appealed, when they sent you a thing rejecting me...
They give you time to perfect any errors. They do, because I've seen that happen before where somebody submits a wrong date for something or you need to put up your veteran status, like give them, I guess, your DD 214 maybe or something like that. They do give you time to perfect any issues.
They helped me and I can show you the emails where they say, you know, originally they rejected me saying I didn't have veteran status and originally I was just like...
Yeah, there's no communication between like the Veterans Commission, whatever.
I got to the bottom of it. That's been corrected. I have a thing from them stating that I do have veteran status and that it would be on that list. So if you don't have that, I will be on the phone with them tomorrow. Does anybody on the committee have any questions for me?
No.
All right.
You can put a hold on that list.
I mean, a hold.
Call up down there and tell them they spurred over.
You have to call.
Let's go move forward with the meeting. Let's move forward. You can talk with Bernie down the road. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Barry, come on down. Bringing the closer in early.
I don't know if I'm the closer. I have two topics I want to talk about, but the first one is a letter I'd like to read. I'll go through it as quickly as I can, so bear with me. It's from the Ocean County Mosquito Extermination Commission and it reads, "Thank you for your inquiry about salt marsh mosquito habitat and the control efforts of the Ocean County Mosquito Extermination Commission in the area of Forkett River Beach Bayfront Park, Lacy Township. I hope this letter answers your questions about mosquito life cycle, mosquito resting habitats, the function of salt marsh grasses, and what the commission is regularly doing to keep mosquito populations down." Mosquito, it goes into detail. Mosquitoes begin their lives as hatch larvae coming from an egg that has been laid in an area of standing water. Mosquito larvae are aquatic, needing a stagnant body of water to survive. The larvae will develop into pupate anywhere from a few days to several weeks, depending on the water temperature and organic content. After pupating, mosquitoes emerge as a winged adult. The females will mate and seek out a blood meal so they can produce eggs. Adult mosquitoes will rest during the day in shaded areas to get out of the sunlight. They prefer tree canopies and salt marsh mosquitoes can typically be found resting under the marsh edge or tree line. They will leave their resting spots if disturbed or if they sense an opportunity to take a blood meal, but they generally wait until dusk or low light periods. Salt marsh mosquitoes are strong flyers and can travel several miles away from where they emerged. The Ocean County Mosquito Commission regularly inspects and treats several mosquito breeding areas in and around the Forkett River Beach Bayfront Park. As you enter the park, there are two infiltration basins on both sides of the roadway. Both basins are inspected by our ground crew throughout the mosquito season and are treated with an appropriate larvicide if found breeding. Right. Additionally, a 25 acre salt marsh impoundment between Pensacola Road and Beach Boulevard is treated aeroly by helicopter every 40 to 42 days from May through September using an extended release larvicide. Finally, I would like to provide some insight into your question about the mowing down salt marsh grasses to control mosquito population. While the mosquito commission recommends mowing turf grass to short lens on residential properties to deter resting adult mosquitoes, the mowing of salt marsh grasses is strongly discouraged. Salt marsh grasses play a vital role in supporting a healthy marsh by supporting habitat for beneficial animals and insects. Additionally, salt marsh grasses are crucial in preventing marsh erosion because the root masses help to hold the substrate from breaking apart during tidal flooding. The disturbance or destruction of vegetation will only speed up the erosion process. Protecting salt marsh grasses is so important that the mosquito commission is required and regulated to impose minimal impact on salt marsh vegetation while conducting mosquito control activities. In closing, I hope this letter has sufficiently educated you on mosquito biology and the role of the Ocean County Mosquito Extermination Commission. Please do not hesitate to reach out to me or another member of our staff if you need anything clarified or explained in great detail. And it's signed sincerely, Michael Senick, Superintendent of the Ocean County Mosquito Extermination Commission. So I just wanted to share that with everyone.
Thank you.
The salt marsh grasses are important, okay? And I think I had mentioned before, erosion is one of the biggest problems that we're facing over there and to do anything that is detrimental to stopping the erosion, as far as I'm concerned, makes no sense. And that's all I have to say about that. A second question, and it has to do with something, not exactly with what you were talking about, the situation with the old community hall and the Warden House. What is the timeline? There was, there's rumors flying everywhere.
Right.
The purchaser, I'm under the impression, and I don't know if you can say it now or not, but I was understanding, had gotten word somewhere, that DeGeorge is the purchaser of the...
He had a resolution in an ordinance to this.
It was said that. Okay. Well, there's rumors going on, there's rumors going on, just to let you know. Okay? So I'm going to say it loudly. DeGeorge is the purchaser of the property.
Michael DeGeorge, correct.
Okay. And as far as timeline, I know we had a meeting in there the other day. Timeline as to when this thing will close and when things will...
He's doing his environmental studies, his items in order to close. Anything any one of us would do when we come to buying a piece of real estate.
Right.
So he's doing all of his due diligence and his environmental, his phase one environmental, so on and so forth, and he is trying to find, I'm going to use the word a tenant, that would want to move to that site, whether they're going to reuse the property or they're going to knock it down.
Right.
And then he wants to go forward, obviously before the planning board, to get his approvals before we close on it. It's contingent upon planning board and local approvals, which any builder would do prior to them signing and buying the property.
But a pie in the sky idea, how long you think it's going to take before anything changes there? Don't have a pie in the sky.
Well, he was, Mr. DeGeorge was telling me he hopes to probably be on the January, February planning board meeting.
So the beginning of next year is going to be the beginning of that.
And if he, you know, get his approvals within a month or two, you know, hopefully we would close, you know, sometime in March or April, if not sooner.
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We'll start on this, keep on working on this side and I'll get to this side.
I'm going to talk about something else. These spurred my imagination.
Your name, please?
My name's Robert Schickling.
Okay.
Beachfront Park, whatever you want to call that.
Beachfront Park, okay.
Oh, refrain from calling it what I'd like to call.
Okay.
Okay, so as what he just said, there's two salt marshes, one on each side of the entrance asphalt to the park.
Okay.
Okay? And it's okay to kill mosquito larvae when deemed fit. And there's no mention of the grassland between the homes and the park because it's low and it fills with water, which mixes very well with the abundance of goose...
Excuse us. Excuse us.
Goose, what should I call it?
Feasies.
Feasies. It mixes very well with the goose feces that is in abundance in that low lying area, which is perfect for mosquitoes to live. And we all know what mosquitoes are. So I don't know about the salt marsh grasses, but I do know about the goose feces.
Address the committee, please.
I don't know about the salt marsh grasses, but I do know about the goose feces and I do know about the low lying water area. So that being said, I'd like to address some of the concerns about the grass and credibility. Everyone up there owes a semblance of credibility to us. And you have to, you were very concerned about the veterans and you showed credibility. When you tell us October 15th, 16th, whatever the date was, and it's on the sign and the and the date comes and goes, and you don't know, we have to say to ourselves, are they showing us credibility? Can we believe them? I understand you haven't decided yet. That's the first we heard that there was a decision to be made. We have a sign on our property that says, hey, October 15th, we're gonna cut all this every year to save the turtles, which is another whole thing. So my question is, how do you reestablish credibility if, in fact, you've lost it with the voting base? And I'm not saying you've lost it, I'm just saying that what you said you were going to do and made very clear that you were going to do, you haven't done it. So, I'm a little bit concerned about the credibility issue. So I'd like to see some decisions made. And I'd like to see better communication between the elected officials and the people. And I'd like to have some concern for the people that actually live there. Because you've walked it. In the springtime, if you wanna talk about goose feces, in the springtime, it's ridiculous. I have photographs, pictures on my phone, where you have, like, a point, and spent a lot of money on decking. You can't even see the decking, because it's completely covered with goose feces. And the children play there. This has to get addressed.
Can I just say, as far as the goose stuff, we all have that problem. I live on the water, I'm right around the corner from you guys.
Yeah.
And I have a lawn, so I get 30 to 40 of them every day on my front lawn.
You got children playing on your lawn?
I have, I have, you know, children, yes, but not little children, but they don't come there because we know it's there. I don't know what we can do about it. This has been a fight for years, okay?
Your suggestion, some of the invasive species of grass, the high fluffy-
They don't go for that.
They do go for that.
No, they don't. They're there for the green lawn, that's what they're there for.
That's essential shelter and protection while they're flying. They see them, and they land there, but it's covered.
I've spent hundreds of dollars on a special stuff to put down to chase them away.
Nothing you can really do about it.
And soon as the next rain comes, it's gone, and I'm back having 30 to 40 of them on my front lawn. You know, I'm gonna, I just wanna say this, because it's an interesting factor, is that everybody, it's just like the person who complains, my, I have, my mom lives on Beach Boulevard, and all she ever hears from all her neighbors is that, oh, there's so much traffic, oh, there's, they're, they're-
Eighty-five thousand car hours.
Right, so here's the point, though. We know what, when we buy something, when I bought my waterfront property, I knew that I was gonna have to deal with what comes along with the waterfront property. Meaning, I watched neighbors put things on their poles so seagulls can't land there. I mean, like, you bought on the water.
I know exactly what we bought three years ago, it was nice and clean, there wasn't any debris, there wasn't any foliage, there was no jungle there. That's what we bought three years ago. What we have now, you've walked it.
I'm, you, I, the only thing that I think that I see when I walk this, because I'm there, as I said, I live close, so I do walk, I ride my bike there, I would agree that maybe we need to take it wider.
Take it wider.
And the pathway area, I think that that-
Oh yeah, you paid for the asphalt, you might as well not cover it up with-
Right.
Right, so I do agree with that part of it. I just, I mean, again, it has to be decided, I'm only, I'm only one little vote.
The lower section of the grassland that's bigger than this room, that is, like, let's say it's a, the mosquitoes come on and have a party here.
Yes, but we can't do anything about that, because all the DEP, no-
Get it a little higher.
Yeah, the DEP won't allow us to just fill it in, you know?
Okay.
You know, we have to answer to them, too.
So, if you're allowed to kill mosquitoes, maybe you could spray them, because that's where the mosquitoes are coming from.
Yeah.
Do you eat the mosquitoes? Are they-
Well-
Do the turtles eat the mosquitoes?
I think-
A birds eat the mosquitoes.
Birds.
That's- We, as we said earlier, and I don't know if you were sitting here, we're gonna make a decision on it.
We can't keep everybody happy.
Yeah, we can't keep everybody happy. So we're gonna make a-
And we listen to you.
Hold on, hold on, we're gonna make a decision tonight as to what we're gonna do. And we're gonna have to live with it.
Okay.
Alright?
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else on this side? Yes, sir. Just state your name for the record, please.
Ed Jarrett.
Excuse me, your name again?
Ed Jarrett.
Thank you.
Okay. I know you're gonna hear from the other side of this, but again, we've been here for about three years, we're down in the bayfront area, and we have that same path, and you're gonna have that argument for, and I just heard it, you've got turf grass, and that's what's up next to the Gabion, it's gone wild. And I used to run private golf courses up in New England for 20 years, and we had what I used to call tree huggers, but people were part of a golf club, and they would still try to not have a tree cut down so the golfers could play through. And the tree huggers were just so annoying, but they were at a golf course. You became a member of a golf course, you expected trees to be moved out when they grew up, whatever. We're down on the bayfront, that used to be beach, I think it's called Forkett River Beach, Bayfront Park, but there is no beach, but it used to be a complete beach. And the people that were there before us, and for us being there, everybody is anticipating, we just had a meeting last week, I believe it was, or not too long ago, that was talking about, you can't talk about the land, we gotta talk about the upper land and all that grass and stuff we're gonna talk about next year. But the issue was, we were talking about eel grass, there's another grass that we need in there, and we have these turtles, and I've been saying it now for the three years since I've been here, I do have a thing for the turtles, because you have your signs out there. We don't mow between June and October because we let the little turtles grow. Well, we did that this year, and you heard that earlier, we had all the cages, we worked with John Weinecke, and he gave us the supplies, we had these turtles, they did hatch, we can't, couldn't find any, because by morning they were gone. And we had a guy out every day, the neighbor that had five traps in front of him, he went out there and checked, and all he could find was the holes that they came out of. But there is no way those little terrapins are gonna make it across that hard path and get down into that bush of all the, these are turf grasses gone wild, they are not seagrass. If somebody's talking about marsh, you are absolutely right. There are marsh grasses, and there are turf grasses. We have turf grasses mixed in with the seagrass down next to that Gabion. And it is so thick, and it covers up so much. This is just 101. I don't mind that there's, you know, seagrass out there and sea marsh, but what you shouldn't have is what I'm now calling, at the south end of that park, you have people that I call weed huggers. They wanna hug onto these weeds that have grown into our grasses and grown into the seagrass. They're choking out everything. We don't need to have weeds. What we need is a plan for real seagrass. I talked with John Weinecke, he said the only way those terrapins are gonna survive is if they have something to go to. When they get into the water, there is no seagrass. We just had someone who gave us a report on eel grass. Eel grass, it's not just the upper soils they're gonna let go when we get the erosion, the sand on the front side of that Gabion's what's gonna get all that, helping the attenuation, that's what's gonna get torn up and put down into the lagoons. So you need to get the seagrass back, you need that eel grass. And what they also need is a certain grass that John mentioned, it's only two or three feet tall, but it's a grass that will help retain the soils on the other side of the Gabion, the water side. We need to grow that all in. So we gotta get a master plan, like you said, next spring. It doesn't just think about the turf grass that's gone wild, because that's really what it is, you can walk down that path, and I agree, widen up the cut path at least, so that when we have, you know, you're walking your dog, or you're walking with someone, you got a kid coming down the path, you can actually get off the path with a dog, so the person with a child who's afraid of dogs can get by you. They can't do that right now, so it's not a park friendly for walking, but we have a nice hard path, what is it there for? So again, this is common sense for a decision tonight. You've got all kinds of grass and weeds, I got, I tell you, every year I go out there, I can pick a whole basket full of French green beans, they're little haircut green beans, and they're edible, but why we have green beans in the Gabion? That came from the soil, whatever top soil was put in.
Or bird dropped the seeds.
Or bird dropped the seeds, or something. But we, again, I don't mind nice seagrass, something that terrapins, once they go into the water, they need the microorganisms that live with that kind of grass. And you said you can do it on the upland, too. We can actually clean that all out, and plant the real grass that a turtle could actually survive and get to the tubes, or whatever else you wanna have. But this is a bigger discussion, but for tonight, that marsh grass, or whatever, he's trying to say it's, you know, upper turf grass versus marsh grass, knowing golf courses and stuff, I know a little bit about grass. This has gotta get cleaned out. This is just ridiculous that it keeps going on, that we're fighting about whether to mow it. It should be removed and redone, and give something that would make a survival for the turtles that we've lost this summer and we continue to lose. But again, I'm not trying to make a point for you to make the decision, but I do not wanna hear the other side come up here and say, oh, it's about the birds, it's about the bees, it's about the, you can have birdhouses, you can have all kinds of things, you can have butterfly pants on your backyard, but we don't need to have a wild marsh. That's gotta stop, this is just ridiculous.
Well, I think, the other night you were at the October 19th meeting, and it was really related to the dredging and the erosion that was going on. And if you heard Rida-
Yes.
From St. Barnabas Bay, say that in the spring, we were going to have an uplands meeting with regards to the maintenance of the vegetation there at that park. And part of that was going to be is, while we were dictated by the DEP to plant certain types of plants, did we plant the right plants? And the DEP is willing to come out to our site to take a look at it, to address it. So, we were, you know, sometime February, March, going to have another meeting with the concerned residents there as well, to discuss what we can do to try to make a happy meeting there. And again, you're correct, certain types of vegetation and plantings are there, because it does maintain the soils there, so we can just stop some of the eroding and stuff like that. So, that is something we were going to address-
And the bigger points to that are, that for all these years, you've been cutting it down, cutting it down, this one year to stop, after everybody this spring, you gotta remember, last year I was here, and we've only been here a couple of years, and it was, you guys can do anything you want up to the path, anything you want up to the path. I weed whacked that whole year, out in front, up to the path, never got a letter. Then this last year, we all said, oh, you know, you can't, you know, we're gonna, we haven't ever made that in writing, but I'll tell you what, that was the concern we had, was we were allowed to weed whack, and then all of a sudden, we did it this year, and we were given letters that said, you can be fined or go to jail. That was not a good way to find out that I can't weed whack this year, guys, you should've let us know not to go ahead and do it, because seven or eight of us got those nasty letters. But that's, that's not right. So again, like I said, the credibility, it's been challenged just because of this whole process, you're right, don't kick it down the road, don't wait till next spring, get this thing mowed down, and let's start again next spring with this big plan that we all have. But to not mow it this year is the wrong year to do it, because you have a lot of neighbors that were upset when we found out with, and another neighbor just got the police at his house, and said he was gonna get a $1,000 fine, and he could possibly go to jail. That's not right. And that's another new neighbor that comes in and says, oh, welcome to Forkett River Beach, there is no beach, but you can't touch anything. And again, the people at the south end, you can maybe designate that next year, you wanna have a weed park, and you got weed huggers in this town, they can all go down to the south end, and they can see all the weeds they want. Maybe we can make a compromise, but I don't want weeds. That's, we're right next to that, we'd be the house right before the south end, so please make a decision tonight, that common sense, you've been doing it all this time, but this was the wrong reason not to do it, and I'd like to see that rectified. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else on this side that wants to talk about Bayfront Park?
Well, there's people on this side.
I'm not done, I'm not done. No? Okay, this side, talk about Bayfront Park. This gentleman right here, we'll start in the, oh, we'll start in the back, come on back, up here, man. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Laura Shetwick, and he may not want to hear from tree huggers, or weed huggers, or bird, or butterfly people, but here I am to talk about it again. First of all, they, it's not turf grass that has gone in there, it's native plants. I've got a list here, just of some, because I take pictures there all the time, there's sweet pepper bush, there's timothy grass, we have wild carrot, we have northern seaside goldenrod, we have rabbit-foot clover, we have three-square bull rush, we have grass leaved rush, we have alfalfa, we have dwarf syncrofoil, we have partridge pea, we have common copper leaf, we have horseweed, which is not a weed. They're not weeds, they're native plants, there's a big difference. There's jimson weed. I can go on and on about the plants that are there, and they're there for a reason, the DEP told you to plant them, and that's why they're planted there. Okay, they're not weeds. I walk there all the time. There's so many things that I have to address, like the turtles, okay? Turtles may have left because they go by the moonlight, so that's why they didn't see the turtles, they follow the moonlight, they probably made it to the water, and if they didn't make it to the water, it's not because of the weeds, the native plants there, it's because of the rocks. They can get through, if you've ever been to a pond, turtles hibernate in the winter, and they go underneath all this muck and the plants. They know what they're doing, it's instinctive, they know how to get to the water. So that is, that's not an argument. And as far as the mosquito, the person said that they couldn't be outside because there's bugs, well, welcome to the Jersey Shore in the summertime, I mean, if you don't want bugs, don't live here. Since, in my lifetime, I was born in 1966, don't do the math, but since 1970, in my lifetime, the bird population has gone down 30%, that's 3 billion birds. What do they eat? Mosquitoes, the crickets, all the things that are in that grass, all the native plants along there. If you walk by there quietly, you can hear all those crickets. The birds need that, whether this person believes it or not. The butterflies need the goldenrod, it's their last source of food before the winter, their last flowering plants to get pollen and nectar from. Also, when you come into the driveway, the two sides there, the, on the left, that you used to mow, October 15th, did not mow, and thank you for putting a halt to it temporarily, whatever it is, I appreciate you walking by and seeing it. It looks absolutely beautiful, except for one house, who happened to cut all their stuff down illegally, because that's my parkland, your parkland, not their parkland. They had no right to do that. So when you come into the park, to your left, where you used to mow, is a beautiful field alive with white asters, which is another plant that blooms in late October. There's white and purple asters blooming there right now. The butterflies need these plants to get through the winter, to get to where they're migrating to, eventually to Florida and onward to Mexico. If you cut these down, you're getting rid of the nectar and the pollen for these butterflies, okay? The monarch is endangered. The monarch uses the saladago and the aster for fuel to get through to where they're gonna go for the winter. So that's that, and the turtles, the grass. Okay, so the geese, the geese feces. Yes, there's some low-lying areas there, okay? These folks keep saying they want the grass cut, they want the grass cut, they want the grass cut. Every time you cut the grass, you're putting a welcome, you know, diner sign, come on, geese, you know, here you go, they love the flat grass. And if there's an issue with some water concentrating there in those lower-lying areas, then let the grass grow, and the geese won't land there, they don't like that. I've said it before, if you see football fields and baseball fields, that's where they go, they like the short turf grass. If you want to get rid of some of the mosquitoes without spraying, let some of that grass grow up in those low-lying areas. For the first time ever, I saw a beautiful false foxglove, it's a beautiful purple plant that grows all along the meadow there, just absolutely gorgeous. So I wanna thank you for thinking about this, not cutting right now, and if you do still want to cut, I would ask you that you would wait until the asters and the goldenrods stop blooming and go to seed. At that point, birds will still use them, but, and also, so maybe if you, you know, if we do get a discussion about this, and these people still insist on having it mowed, let's wait until maybe end of November, when all these flowers are done blooming. And in the springtime, I would suggest mowing a lot earlier, because like I said the last time, the DEP had you plant milkweed, which is a very important plant for the monarchs, it's one of the only plants that they lay their eggs on, that the caterpillars actually eat for food. And last year and years prior, you cut it down when it was only about this big, so it never got a chance to grow and produce leaves and produce flowers. So if you're gonna mow in the springtime, I suggest mowing a lot earlier.
So I think we mow like pretty close to the end of April as one final mow.
I would say mow a lot earlier than that, that way the milkweed-
It's like, May 1st, we have to stop mowing.
That weed, yes, that way the milkweed has a chance to grow and do its thing, I mean, the DEP told you to plant it for a reason, and it never gets to flower. It never gets that big, because you cut it down too, too late. What else? I think that's it. That's it. But I appreciate you walking there and seeing what the destruction that one of those people that live there did to our park property.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the, on Bayfront Park, this lady right here?
Careful. My name is Arlene Berkowitz. We've owned a home there on Beach Boulevard for either 39 or 40 years. We lost our original home to Sandy, and we immediately started to look around for another home there, because it's such a special place, it's really like living in a national park. Why go to Yellowstone when you get your coffee and sit right outside, and it looks like Yellowstone Lake? So it's really very, very special. I took some photos, and I'd like to give them to you, but when I first came here, there was a man named Gilly, I don't know if anybody knows him, and he, he took endless maps and showed me, because I was thinking of buying a house, and I was very concerned, there was so much land in front of 1710, that there's room for a road, and there's room for another row of houses. And he said, don't worry about that, the water's moving in. And he said, "Don't worry about that, the water's moving in." I didn't know exactly what he meant, but we've enjoyed it all these years. So it's changed. A lot of new people are coming in. They're used to like golf course lawns, and there's a certain beauty to the natural growth. We don't have to put chemicals on this. The chemicals don't have to go out to the water and go to, with the tides over to where people are swimming. I think it's very important. I did want to show some pictures, and these were taken very randomly of growth.
One careful.
Either way. Of what it looks like in summer. They are... You see the man in charge? Another man in charge. There's one man in charge.
One man, too.
Some others. Some others. And I have some more of what people...
When did you take these, ma'am?
They're just...
No, when?
Was it the springtime? Oh, summer.
Okay.
And the flowers just keep...
Sure, sure, sure. We're just, we're just trying to get a...
I don't know the names of any flowers.
We're just trying to get a, fix some time.
And here's a house that has determined to...
Stand aside.
...property. This is before apparently the car was, and what it looks like. It doesn't hold the ground there, it doesn't hold the soil. It's been here through enough storms. The big plants, the homes that were least affected, had the bushes there and things along the way to hold the soil in place. In your three or four years, you have not been here long enough to have a refrigerator float into the bathroom. So I did want to bring along these pictures, though. We were out in California, and we went to a science museum. And their concepts are pretty progressive out there. It's a very modern building, all kinds of glass. They don't plant, they, they put in the native plants. That's their idea of what belongs there. That's what grows there, even though the building is very contemporary. Some of it, like in other parts of Ocean County, the sides may have to be cut back a bit.
Yes.
As it is, children can go walking there, they pick flowers, the people walk their dogs. We don't know, there's the lady with the dalmatian dog, he's going to go down there today. Because we face there, it's a very active place. But we cannot turn it into the California shore. Some people think that if we cut this all down, it's gonna look like California. It isn't.
Can we keep it down, people? She's trying to talk.
Excuse me?
No, I'm not talking to you.
Talking to the...
Yeah, people are talking at the mic.
Respect to the other people at the mic.
Please, please have respect for what they're saying.
So I would like to, oh, here's a picture from our last trip. It was a very nice trip. I gave my husband, told him to make copies, we made some copies there. Not part of it, but I wanted to show you is the brightly colored glass museum and the vegetation with it. This is the new trend, and California is generally a little bit ahead of a place like New Jersey. And Forkett River has changed tremendously. I mean, it's, now it's going to be a pretty sophisticated, affluent place, and, but we cannot turn it into what it isn't. So I would like to give you these.
Thank you.
Just pass for that.
Yes.
Okay. These are out in California.
Exactly. California. It's the concept, it's the nature.
Right. We've seen, we've seen this before. She's did this before.
Great living buildings. So I want to thank you for your time and consideration. I'm glad that you have given this much more thought, because something is done all the time for years and years, surgery, you know, these things, life changes, and I want to thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Anybody else on this side that wants to talk about, this man here, wants to talk about Bayfront?
Is this working?
Yes, it is.
My name's Dr. Stan Hales. I'm director of the Barnegat Bay Partnership.
We are the National Estuary Park. I work for all of you. We're the organization that produces the Comprehensive Conservation Management Plan for the Bay. Every five years, we put together the State of the Bay Report, that's put together with about 15 different organizations, federal government, state government, county. Worked with a former senator, and I'm working with the group that's working on the Forkett River restoration project. I've heard a lot of passion here.
Stan, can you do a spare, can you talk at the microphone only so that you're holding it in the back of the room? That's perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Don't get right into it, it's very loud on my end. You know, but you have to be facing it.
Normally, I don't need a mic for people to hear me speak.
But this is so the TV...
Yeah, no, that's fine. And thank you, I apologize.
That's right.
I thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I've heard a lot of passion here tonight. Fortunately or unfortunately, that's sometimes the position I'm put in here. I've heard a lot of misinformation about a lot of things. And the most important thing I'd like to say tonight is that everybody in this room bears responsibility for the protection of the bay. The bay is changing. Lots of the ways that we might have faced problems in the past, we can't face now. The really, really big problem out on that beach, and you have a lot of groups working on it, is what happens as sea level rises over time. And a lot of these problems are connected, and somebody mentioned earlier that plants help hold down the soil, they help hold down those rocks by sustaining and supporting the soils underneath, and those are important things. John Wenick's not the only person who's published papers on terrapins. I have, too. I was part of the restoration program for oil spill down in Chesapeake Bay. Roger Wood and I actually developed that technology that John now uses to put protective mesh over the nests to find the hatchlings when they hatch. One of the things he probably didn't tell you, he could tell you now, a lot of those turtles spend a year in the ground and don't come out in the fall, they come out the following spring. So that's one of the reasons why you haven't seen some of those nests hatch, those eggs are still in the ground. One of the reasons you see those nests so far from the rocks in your yards is because that particular area is really not good nesting habitat. It's not because the vegetation, it's dense, it's because those particular plants have such deep-growing roots, the roots grow into the nest. They basically tap into the eggs for nourishment. So you don't expect, you shouldn't ever expect to see a lot of terrapins coming out of the ground on that property up there. It's not, it's just not how things work. Okay? It was said earlier, something about Britta and that group, working on this and putting together a plan regarding the vegetation. The woman who spoke earlier is absolutely right. Vegetation's important to migrating birds, butterflies, and to other things. I like to think of insects as baby birds. Most baby birds only eat the young of insects, not the adults of insects. So you're actually harming bird populations by not helping them migrate. Now, there is a compromise there. You can cut the vegetation down, but the critical thing becomes the timing of that. And I'll be honest, birds don't read signs very well. They don't know that October 16th, they're supposed to be down south. Okay? So I'd give them a chance, and I'd wait a little later in the year before you start the cutting. I walked that path today. I hadn't been there since the last meeting, out at Beach Club Park, when I spoke to all the, the members and owners out there. I, I thought it was lovely, I thought it was beautiful, and I thought there was a small, hideous piece. You have a non-native species, phragmites. I've never seen ducks come up to it too much, normally because the former senator is hiding in it. You know, you're a well-known duck hunter, everybody likes to have a little, you know, breakup of their, their, their place, so... But phragmites is non-native. You may see a lot of birds use it, but it's now known that that is not a productive habitat for birds. Birds will use it, but the only birds that use it are basically birds that were hatched elsewhere. They can't actually raise their young in it. So, you know, I personally would advise the township to get rid of the frag there. You can't spray chemicals.
No.
Right? You know, I, I actually admire the township for approving the state's model riparian buffer ordinance. It, it actually places some restrictions on the use of chemicals in those areas, but it doesn't prevent a bunch of enthusiastic volunteers like all of you from going out there and digging up the frag. It's a pain, it's really difficult, but it's a great thing to do on a fall day or an early spring day when the weather's nice. So that's sort of my initial reaction to some of that. We do a lot of work all over the county, and we actually have a very popular statewide program. So what I've got up here is some propaganda, but it's really good propaganda. It's been well-recognized by others. First is a low-maintenance landscaping guide. This was developed by the Ocean County Soil District with our funding. I've given away something like 50,000 copies of this. We have people actually begging me. We're now doing a northern New Jersey version, a mountain version of this, and we're actually trying to work on an island, a bay island version of this. But basically, it tells you all the native plants and what they're good for, and the conditions, et cetera. And this is just a little card that pushes you to the website. The other thing we have...
I have a prize for all of you. A sign you can put in your yard, if you follow all the steps and get certified by our program. This is a program that was started by DEP.
Everybody can hear? Started by DEP. Sometimes we even give people a little money to help get started. Sometimes. And, and there's a little guide up here about how to get started. And I think, yeah, just more of the same. But the point I'm trying to emphasize here is there's a lot of education that we could all use, become a little better informed about this, and I would offer the assistance of that other group, and myself, and the staff in my program, to assist on this any further. But I, as I said, I would ask, I respect Britta, she's been a longstanding protector of Barnegat Bay, and right now, everybody has been tied up thinking about some of the bigger problems out on the beach. And I should add, at the state's request, I'm the one who picked up the tab for the woman who's monitoring the SAV out in the water. The group doing that couldn't fund it, just didn't have the money. But SAV is one of the bay's most important habitats. We felt important enough that I gave them $100,000 of your money. Okay?
Can you explain what an SAV is for those that don't know?
Yeah, SAV is submerged aquatic vegetation. The species of concern out there is eelgrass. Eelgrass occurs from, oh, somewhere like Cape Fear, all the way up to Casco Bay, Maine. It's, it's under threat. Other SAV species are under threat worldwide. Things live in it, lots of neat fishes, lots of little crabs, some snails, and it's one of the things that takes all of the nutrients out of the water. So it helps clear the bay water, which makes it more enjoyable for everyone, helps keep the DOs nice and high. So there's a lot of value in protecting SAV. And to give you just an example of how important we think it is, we've been working for a number of years to acquire funding to support an SAV Restoration Center. We're talking about millions of dollars in state investment and federal investment. And so that's how committed everyone is to working on this. Right now, SAV restoration runs about $1 million an acre. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And Stan, I was planning on, with this future meeting that we're gonna have, about the inland property, was to include all those experts that we've had at our two Bayfront meetings. I know you weren't at the October 19th meeting.
Yeah, I was at my mother-in-law's.
Well, that's great. Yeah, but I was planning on including all of the partnerships there to work on this. Yes.
Thank you.
Pat Doyle, 1620 Beach Boulevard. Thank you all. I'll be brief. We've heard a lot tonight. Thank you, Dr. Hales, for taking your time. Veronica.
Yes.
I want to commend you. I heard people say tonight that it was a loss of credibility because things are changing. Well, things do change.
Very good.
And what I commend you for is that, and I truly mean this.
Thank you.
You have provided leadership. You have provided a model for decision-making that is tempered and measured and based on fact-finding. The reason things are changing is because issues are being raised that, to your credit, you're grappling with. You're weighing them. You're saying, "Well, he said that, I kind of like that, but she said that, mm, mm, mm." I like to think I'm not a weed hugger. I'm a very avid gardener. I've learned a lot in the last 17 years about the importance of native perennials. The Bayfront is not turf grass. Correct me if I'm wrong, Veronica, it's Ocean County seed mix.
I believe it did come from the ocean grow from the OCU. You are correct.
Okay, which, there is grass, there's also very valuable plants, which Laura has pointed out, but the grasses are immense. There's switchgrass, panic grass, blue stem, which is sold by landscapers, because I have it in my yard. There's a variety of plants. So whether people think certain plants should be dug up, it doesn't make, to me, any use to dig up everything, because you're throwing away good, valuable plants. There's many opinions. They all count. People have different things that they want, and what people want is important to them. However, let's hope that our opinions are based on facts. And what we want is balanced with what is necessary. We know we have problems down there. And I do support the vegetation for beneficial insects and other reasons. I support it as a tool in our anti-erosion toolbox. But one thing I commend you for, Veronica, is saying, we need that educational meeting. And I hope that before strong decisions are made, we have that meeting sooner than later. I know people are busy, but I really think we need to have that meeting before the spring, and really before major mowing happens. I agree with Dr. Hales. I think it's beautiful down there. And so I commend you, Veronica, because you're saying, I think the role model is, let's take our time, let's gather the facts, let's not jump to haste, and let's not do things the way we've always done them. Let's really think about this issue and do what gives us the best chance out there. Nothing's perfect. We are at risk, and eventually, Mother Nature will win in that community, sadly, and we will lose the community that we love so much. What we, some of us are trying to do, and that's the truth, is we are fighting for as much time as we can get down there. And so thank you, Veronica, thank you to the committee, for thinking things through differently than you did before, and I really do mean it. I hope we have that meeting. I just want to say, there are many people that would be interested to be a part of that meeting. One group is the New Jersey Animal Protection League. They are not animal rights people, they are animal protection people. They have a domestic animal and wildlife branch. They do outreach to municipalities for free. They say the number-one way, way to mitigate your geese herd is the riparian buffer. They will send somebody to do a site visit, they will develop suggestions, proposals, another source of information. And they did send me some information, which I'd like to email to you tomorrow, Veronica, if that's all right.
Perfect.
One person who wanted to be here tonight was Ellie Brecko. She had a transportation issue, but she's doing great. She authorized me to say she supports the vegetation, that she thinks it's lovely. She's back walking after her accident. She is doing great, and she really enjoys the path at the Bayfront Park. I would suggest that instead of handing us a plan, that we are adults. And maybe we could form a working group of interested people who live on and off the path to work with Britta, who, I mean, Britta or whoever is the working group, to develop a plan that at least the majority of people could agree to. And if that is done, Ellie would like to participate in some way. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this side that wants to talk about Bayfront Park? Okay, we said we were gonna make a decision tonight, we're gonna stop the public session right now, and we're gonna talk about it and make a decision, like we said.
Steve?
I'm gonna go first. My suggestion is, is probably the same suggestion I made back in 2020, and this is that the houses that are, if, so let me back, if it were my house, I do believe in the, the storm attenuation and, and all the other stuff that the young lady was talking about before. But however, I, you know, when I was walking out there, I do understand the concerns of the, the homeowners that, that have the, the view of the bayfront. So I, back in 2020, I said they should get, you know, if you want, and this is just for the houses, not the, I guess, the northern, or, right, the northern part? The uplands grass? That if they want it cut, they should put a sign up that says, "Please cut my grass." And if you do not want it cut, you should have a sign that says, "Please do, you know, please leave it alone." Whatever. One of the, you know, put a sign up. "It's our grass."
Is that all, is that all you got, Steve? Yeah. So...
This is, that's all, just sorry, yeah, that's, I'm talking just specifically to the, the houses that have the bayfront view.
My experience with the DEP is, normally, they, they ask for this, even when they really only need to do this. And I've seen it time and time again, whether it be when we wanted to build a road, when, you know, whatever it might be. If, if they're allowing us to mow from October 16th to May 1st, that's when we should mow. We should mow from Oct- We should mow from October 16th to May 1st. Nature will find a way. That's, you know, that's it. I mean, I understand it's not the optimal for nature, but the DEP, they're the experts. They're saying this is optimal. That's it. The floor is closed. The floor is closed right now. That's my opinion.
All right, hold on.
My opinion is, the DEP says do it, let's do it.
Peggy Sue. What are your thoughts?
I'm the oddball out, because I, I think what Mr. Kennas just said would probably be the only thing that I would possibly go along with, would be, is if you do want it mowed, then we'll mow yours.
Well, yes, I agree with that.
But it, but it, you know, it's the nature. It's just, it's, it's just beauty to me, and so I'm on a different standard than maybe everybody else is here. I would, I would go along with this if that makes, if that kind of brings everybody into a playing field of getting, you know, along. Because also, what's happening here, and I can see it, is we are becoming enemies of the field here. The neighbors are going to be bickering and bickering and bickering and, like, really, as somebody who's been through hell, what is the real issue here? Like, what are we really talking about? So like, maybe if we could just come to a little bit of an agreement between each other that it doesn't have to be a war. And that's what this is becoming. I can tell by the atmosphere, it's becoming a war. So my feeling is, is if you want yours cut, then we'll cut yours. But if we, if you don't want yours, don't cut mine.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Peter?
Yeah, I, I've already stated my position, and when the gentleman, whose name I don't know, talked about credibility, that's important to me. So I'm going to tell you how I feel about it and why I feel the way that I do. Before Sandy, I wanted people's opinion. I talked to our Department of Public Works manager, who is a licensed, certified, public works manager. And I said, "Rob, you know, tell me about this." And he said, "Pete, we used to cut it all the time before Sandy. No one said a word." So then I looked at the map of New Jersey. We have about 172 miles, well, it goes up to, it goes up to exit 119, 120 of waterfront area. We have an obligation to manicure our property. If we don't, and someone trips or someone falls, that's the first person that sues us. If you noticed on this agenda tonight, and on, I won't say every agenda, virtually every agenda, we have one or two or more properties that we actually charge a homeowner for for not keeping their property manicured. Gilly Park, which, it's not even really up for discussion, and people at Hebrew might not like it, the crown jewel of this, this town, Gilly Park. We cut those trees, we manage that grass, we cut those shrubs. No species has been displaced. The kids are able to play soccer. Nature lives together in harmony with humans. So when I see groups come in, like, say, of Barnegat Bay, I'm going to tell people a little something. I'll go a little bit on the, on my soapbox. I know what I'm talking about. I'm master's prepared. I'm the Cooperative Coastal Monitoring Program Manager for Ocean County, at the Ocean County Health Department. Barnegat Bay Estuary, as far as enterococcus bacteria goes, is healthy. The geese do cause, and rain runoff does cause problems as far, and then there may be a small advisory, and then it clears up. But you're talking about a minuscule part of this landmass that is New Jersey, that is the entire eastern seaboard. So no one can paint us into, I hear advocacy for partridge pea, goldenrod, alfalfa, monarch butterflies, insects, summer flounder, eelgrass. Another thing I don't hear advocacy for? The people that want to recreate on Barnegat Bay, rent a boat, rent a jet ski, take their family and their children to Tice's Shoals, engage with respect to the Barnegat Bay, because we love it and it is part of our history here, and it's going to be part of our future, with, with specific regard to our tourism. So we can live together, we can cut grass. I don't think, Mayor, that we need to form a committee to give us permission to cut grass that will grow back, just like it does in all the other parks. And I don't hear anybody talking about when we cut grass at Hebrew. Okay? So these are, these are things that there are responsibility to keep our residents healthy and our grounds clean. That's how I feel about it. I'm not going to vacillate, but if this, then that, how you feel, I'm for cutting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think there's three. Steve, you're okay with you with the signs?
I want to separate out the, I really didn't decide on, I guess it's, is it uplands portion first? Specifically to the homeowners. I think they should put up a sign that says either "Cut" or "Do not cut." That's what I proposed for that.
All right. Are you okay with that too, right?
Those that are adjacent to our property to cut our property.
If they want it cut...
I got to, because if we make a decision, I got to understand what we're doing.
Are you okay with that too, right, Mark?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I'd be okay with that too. If the people want, if the people, if that's, if we're going to have permission to cut our grass, fine.
It's not about getting permission to cut our grass. It's, we're trying, we're trying to appease over here and over here.
So read what you're proposing, Mayor.
My, here's, here's my opinion. I'm okay, we want to put the signs up, that's fine. That will solve the issue for a little while, because eventually, people are going to be upset, they're going to move out, people don't want it. It's going, it'll solve the issue temporarily, and we're going to have to deal with this issue again. I'm okay with it now. My suggestion is that we get that meeting as quickly as possible, and we figure out a policy, and we stick to the policy. Is it going to please everybody? No. It's just the way it's going to be. But we got to get the professionals involved in all of this, and putting professionals together with, it takes a lot of time and coordination, and they all want to talk, or they all want to say their way is the right way and everything else like that. So we're going to have to narrow it down, get the professionals to do this, get this meeting together as quickly as possible before the spring cut, and we do it that way. To me, I'm okay. You want to put the signs up? Go right ahead. I'm okay with that. So for now, I think that's what we do. We put the signs up. Everybody agree with that?
Put the signs up.
Put the signs up.
Are we allowed to do that, Veronica?
Very judiciously.
Because you said it's our property.
Well, we're not going to put a sign up.
It's the residents.
No, no. Residents put the sign up. I still think we, I still think we need to cut that path wider, because we're going to lose the path, and we lose the path, it's going to cost us a lot of money to get it back. Okay? That's part of it. So let's get it cut, the path widened, the path, let the signs go up, and let's deal, let's plan on early, like, January, February, getting that meeting. Because it's going to take a while, as Mr. Hill will tell you, to get that plan together so we know what to do, because we can cut, what, as of April 1st?
May 1st is when we have to stop.
May 1st, we can't cut past May 1st, right? If we, if that's the decision. I don't know what the decision is going to be. But it's going to take time to put this whole meeting and get a policy out that's going to work for everyone.
Well, right now, the DEP says we can cut till May 1st.
Right.
And if we don't make a decision by May 1st, well, that's, you know...
That's the deal. That's the deal. I would like to have some sort of policy. May not get it, may not, but I would like to have it.
You're the government.
Like to have it. So I'm okay with it.
All right, so now, we've got to wrap this up into a motion, so like, Amy and I understand what is going on here so that we can dictate this to the powers that...
Okay, the most, I'll make the motion, and somebody else can second it or something like that. The motion is to allow the individuals on the bayfront, on that path, to put signs in their yard, "Cut or not cut." Correct? Is that okay?
Well, they're not putting it in their yard. They're putting it on the property that actually belongs to us, okay, as a township, whether or not they want that cut down or not cut down.
Okay, Amy says she's getting this. We'll see.
Amy got it? Amy's got it.
Amy's got it. I got it. That's the motion. Do I have a second?
Yes. Uh, yes.
You can't, you made the motion.
I had a second.
All right.
Ms. Juliana?
Please.
Yes. Mr. Kiratala?
Yes.
Mr. DiGaw?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes. Okay, that issue, no, we're done with the issue. We're done with the issue.
So now, so the residents here know that they should get some kind of, and I'm not talking about a four-by-four big sign, okay? But like a lawn sign, you see those little political signs out? I'll use that as an example, something like that. But at the same time, I ask those of you that wish to have it mowed, if you could send an email with your name and address so that I can officially put it on the list and map it out on the tax map, if that's what you wish to do.
And we will work very...
And those that don't want it mowed, please let me know as well so that we kind of map it out on the tax map.
And we will work very hard to get that meeting together as quickly as possible.
Yes, I will reach out to the players and get that meeting together.
So we can work on this. Okay.
Will that meeting be open to... Oh, it's going to be the same way we did the last two meetings with regards to the dredging and the beachfront erosion.
Right.
So I'd be welcome in that. Anybody in town would be welcome to go to that. Doesn't matter where you live.
All right.
Yes, Stan?
I just want to say something. Is that you okay?
Quickly.
Okay, very quickly. To the people that are concerned about butterflies and ecosystem, we're not against that, so we need to give some education.
And that's what I want to do.
That was, that's the nicest thing I've heard tonight so far. Thank you.
Bernie, you look like you want to say something.
She gets credit for biology.
Bernie, you got bio tonight. All right, all right. So now, we're going to reopen the public to any comment anybody wants to make. Yes, sir?
Good evening. Joe Bransford. This question pales in comparison, but the energy aggregate program that ends this month that we've had with Energy Harbor for the last two years, I may have missed it in a prior meeting, but can you give us an update on where we stand?
Surely I can.
Thank you.
So obviously, you know that it is expiring this month. Unfortunately, the market is not very favorable right now to enter back into an aggregation program. So we have not gone out to rebid for the community aggregation program. We are watching the market, and at the time when it's favorable, we will go back and out to bid. Right now, JCPN is the cheapest rate, and they are our normal carrier anyway, so we're all reverting back to JCPN until the market changes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Steve, come on down.
Two seconds. Let's use the ladies.
Okay, hold on a second. Hold on a second, Steve. We're going to take, we're going to take a five-minute recess here. Some people have to use the...
Pause the tape.
So you have to use the facilities. Give us, give us five minutes, Steve. All right.
All right. Want me to record?
Yes. Let him get out of here.
I can tell them not to worry about moving into Lake after the first year.
Yes, I don't know. I haven't, yeah, because I haven't gotten any more updates from, like...
Recording.
He is with the process file. I know I can let him his professional...
I want to get out of here tonight.
Yes, I know he's having his professionals come in.
That would be something, that could be...
Red ship sale.
Because he still has to go through the planning boards.
I know, it's not Eagle, so you don't care.
And all of that stuff. If he has a tenant.
All right. Back in session. Out of the recess, Steve, come on down. Steve?
Paul, sir?
Yep. Thank you for your patience. Not the Jerry choice, but...
Steve Barle, proud resident of Fork River for 60 years. I'm here once again to address our opposition to the municipal complex. I consider myself the spokesperson for the taxpayers who oppose this building, the new municipal complex, and its resulting increase of property taxes for all Lacy Township taxpayers. I'm also the spokesperson for the taxpayers who don't even know that the Lacy Township Committee intentions to build this new municipal complex. I am also the spokesperson for seniors on fixed incomes, taxpayers raising families, and those less fortunate taxpayers who live paycheck to paycheck, and there are plenty of them. We, us, me, are trying to tell the Township Committee we cannot afford more taxes, that the current municipal building is sufficient for the township needs. Collectively, in my group, after careful consideration for the cost, needs of the township, and what the taxpayers deserve, we have a conclusion that is, this building does not have enough office space. Evaluate, evaluate all jobs and positions and can make a consideration to allow certain employees to work from home who don't have direct contact with Lacy Township taxpayers and citizens. Some employees may be able to work all week from home or part of their work week. Or, as suggested at the last meeting I attended, create two shifts of employees, like businesses do, and other enterprises in order to save money. While the public is here, these two shifts could deal with their written responsibilities, and when the public is here, deal with the public. That's why I keep requesting that we form an advisory committee made up of both Township Committee members and Lacy Township taxpayers. This advisory committee could independently determine which positions could move to home either on a full-time or a part-time basis. Also, this advisory committee can review the entire building to make recommendations and get estimates to fix whatever needs attention, something that this committee has either failed to do or refuses to discuss and disclose what's wrong with this building. Since February, I have repeatedly asked for the estimates to fix what's wrong with this building, and I have got nothing except for a $35,000 engineer's report to make a gigantic addition to this building and to the police station. I will keep on asking for these estimates, and I want to find out what's wrong with this building and whether it is sufficient to house the existing employees that work And while I'm on the subject of this building, I'd like to ask the committee, the elected officials, what they know about this building and what needs to be fixed, what departments need more space, and who could work from home. Is there anyone that can answer that question?
Can you answer one part of it, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Stephen, you know, I respect you. I will let you know, I want to address one part of what you said, and I'll let the land use professionals do the rest. You talking about a possibility of staggered shifts or work from home.
Right.
This is a union state. I have six unions at the county. We have the same six unions, I think, here. To get to, I have, I have a veterans outreach in Plumstead. Just let, just let me finish. Tomorrow, I need written permission from an employee two weeks in advance, and this employee happens to be new, for me to even ask, and he could tell me to go jump in a lake if he wanted to. There's nuances here with certain unions, certain people. How do you tell a DPW guy or lady that they can, they could never work from home? Because they got to be, well, don't want to start anything, cutting grass, among other things. But what's life without comedy? So I use that as, as an example. So there's, there's a lot of, I mean, what you're saying, I get it, but there's nuances here with union workshops. This is not a right-to-work state like South Carolina or Georgia. We got to do what unions say to do. We have to negotiate everything, down to the minute of time, to increments and promotions and titles. Thank you.
Okay. So, based on this, these tough union rules that you're telling me, when you build your new complex, who's going to maintain it? A private company that's going to bump, bump the township workers from doing their job?
No.
No.
That's what it says in your pre, pre-construction agreement that you guys signed back in April. Okay? It talks specifically about hiring a private company. And by the way, who is the union president for the township workers in Lacy Township?
There's several unions.
Okay, give me a couple of names. You know any of them? Who, who represents the people that maintain this building?
We don't talk about personnel on TV. There has to be rice notices. There, we can't start dropping names and naming names.
You can't tell me who the president, you can't tell me the president of the union. Okay, I'll move on.
Hold on, each union, each, hold on.
I'm not trying to hide something from you, Steve.
Each union has their own representatives that meet and when they want to negotiate, they bring in somebody from another part to do it. That's how it works.
Okay. So you're telling me, you're telling me, excuse me, I'm asking a.
Were you a union person?
Look, that's neither here nor there who I work for. That's got nothing to do, I'm up here to talk about this new proposal that's going to strap the taxpayers and the different spends that the township puts on them. So it's illegal. I'll, I'll ask the township workers who represent them. So getting back to this building, I want to ask you this. Or does the roof leak?
In this building?
Yes.
Yes.
What efforts have you made to stop it?
Veronica, you want to tell them what we've done?
He doesn't want to hear from me because I'm not an elected official. So are you giving me the right to?
Well, you should know what's been done, Mr. Mayor. What's been done?
Veronica, you can answer this question. Go ahead.
There's been several times that we've re-coated the roof and redone the roof and the latest one that was done was in 2019 and that held up until about late last year. And now we're finding leaks in new areas of the roof, of areas that we didn't have leaks before.
Okay, so it's going to be fixed?
I have not gone out and gotten quotes yet to get it fixed, um, at all.
Well, one of the.
Go ahead.
Right, so, so there's no money in the budget for me to fix it because it wasn't an approved project for 2023. So as we are starting to develop our 2024 budget, those will be items that will be addressed.
The township doesn't have money set aside for emergencies such as?
This is not, this is not considered an emergency.
No.
There's certain parameters under the law as to what's considered an emergency.
Is it creating a mold situation in here? No. Is there mold in this building?
According to the study that I did during COVID, everybody and every building has mold. Is it mold where it is a concern and medical issue?
Is it affecting the health of the employees?
No, it's not.
Okay. And, um, are there broken windows or windows that need to be replaced?
Yes.
When are they going to get replaced?
Yeah, it's not placed in the budget for me to do that.
How long have they been broken?
For a very long, it's not every window, but for a very long time. Some of the seals and the, uh, the edging and stuff like that is falling off. And again, while items are presented at the time of budget, the budget is decided upon as to what projects we're moving forward each year and around the timeframe of March.
Okay, what departments need more space in this building? That have inadequate space?
Finance office, uh, community development, which isn't even in this building. Um, IT needs more space for the server rooms. Municipal court office needs more space. We are being ordered by the, uh, office of the courts that 90% of our courts have to be back in person. They are starting to phase out virtual court.
And this is not, this room is not in compliance.
This room is not.
Okay.
This room is, Mr. Borl, this room is not in compliance with DOJ regulations as it, as it pertains to ingress and egress.
And besides, the police department needs space as well.
The police department is totally inadequate.
The what? The police department?
Police department.
Well, we could put a second story on it.
You can't put the second story.
Yes, you can.
No, you can't.
And you can't put trailers, as was mentioned in the previous meeting.
The foundation won't hold it?
Let me answer this one. Why we not, because I'm not putting lipstick on a pig. I told you this before. I'm not, it would be millions to spend on a police station. I'm not spending millions on property that should be commercially taxed. I told you.
You're not spending anything. It's our money.
It's my money too.
Okay, you throw yours in.
My friend, I'm a parent.
But you say you're spending millions. You're paying, spending thousands.
Millions to spend on the, on the, uh, police station. Whether to, whether it's rehab.
So did an engineer tell you that you can't build a two-story building?
No, we can, I just told you why.
How do you know for sure that it can't?
No, you can't, we could do anything. I just told you why. I'm, I'm a no vote because I'm not putting lipstick on a pig. That's what I told you in layman's terms. In addition to that, let's just make up a number. Say it's $5 million to rehab the whole police station. It would be way more than that, but let's just use pretend numbers.
It's better than 100 million.
I'm not spending my taxpayer money doing a rehabilitation on a project that's on commercially taxable property. That's why.
And I'm on board with him.
Okay. All right, well, I, I believe that you could put a second story on there. I don't believe the township committee had an engineer or some kind of firm determine whether that's feasible. This building is adequate and we should get an advisory committee to check on what the township is telling us tonight as to whether they are that cramped in this building and us to make an independent report to the committee after we, we do our investigation. So can we form an advisory committee to examine this building, examine the workspace and come to a conclusion that maybe you guys are right, but maybe you're not? Can we form a committee?
Do you have certification to do that?
Excuse me?
There are people out there certified to do that. Do you have that certification?
What certification would I need?
Space.
Ask employees here whether or not they got adequate space.
The engineer.
And to look at the windows that are broken, the roofs that's leaking and to get estimates to fix this stuff. Because you guys have just bypassed the first logical thing to fix this building before you build your 100 million colossal tax burden behind us. Okay? So I'm trying to save the township money. I'm trying to save the taxpayers' money.
Me too.
I'm trying to be the voice of reason when you guys just in this economical time to construct such a moustrosity when it's not needed, when the work of the future is from home, when the work of the future is with shift work and with storage, you could either build a steel building to put your storage in or do like we did with my organization is we put every, all our documents on microfiche that we could and then we shredded them and the ones that we could and we stored. It's, it's 2023. We don't need to keep a thousand boxes of documents.
Yes, we do because we're involved, we're required to. We have to keep the building plans for a building for the life of the building in paper. Yes, we can scan it.
Well, then why don't you, why can't you put up a, a storage building for them?
That has to be air-conditioned and heat-controlled.
Well, I disagree respectfully. All right, I, I'm shifting gears.
Oh, boy.
I disagree with everything you're saying. Uh, the, uh, two nights ago, we had a, a meeting at the Pheasant Run Clubhouse. Uh, the deputy mayor, Mr. Kennas attended and I, I, I thank, uh, Pheasant Run and I welcome any other retirement development, any organizations such as the Elks, Moose, or any other organ, veterans, to allow my group to come in and we have an opportunity to explain why we oppose this municipal complex. But anyways, getting back to the Pheasant Run meeting, Mr. Kennas took upon himself to make some, several comments that I want to ask him about in front of this committee. Mr. Kennas said that after we talked, that we only tell half the truth. So I'm going to ask Mr. Kennas at this hearing right now, what is the half of the truth that we're lying about?
I don't remember all the comments. How about what you just said about the fact that we don't have to, we don't have to keep the documents?
I'm asking.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm going to answer.
I'm asking Mr. Kennas.
Well, you know, that's all right.
I've got a question for you.
That's all right, but I'm allowed to talk. How about that we only have to keep half the documents? You just said that.
You only have what?
We only have to, we, we don't need to keep the documents.
There's certainly, don't tell me there isn't documents that you can't put on microfiche. It's 2023, sir.
You just have the truth.
You send someone to go find a box of documents, row 15, aisle four, box 27, it bring to you?
Did I answer your question? Yes.
I'm going to answer two, two, that I remember off the top of my head. I didn't tape the meeting, so I don't recall.
That's what you said at the meeting.
No, I know, I'm going to tell you.
You specifically disrespected me again by saying that I'm lying. Steve!
Yeah, you are.
In front of a, in front of people.
You are, you are.
You are.
You're lying.
Tell me what I'm lying about.
I'm going to tell you, you said it's going to cost over 100 million dollars. That's one. And you said it's going to include a pool. That's two. That's two lies.
You didn't talk about putting a swimming pool in?
No.
No.
No?
No.
Oh, it must have been at a different township meeting.
Yeah, you're right. I said, if, if we talk about something privately, there's all sorts of ideas going. You have an idea that we're going to put three stories on the, the police station?
One, one extra story. That way you don't infiltrate the dump.
Whatever it is.
If that would sink, how come this building ain't sinking?
You lied and said 100 million dollars.
In fact, in fact, inside, you're wrong. Because the police department is not built over the dump. That fence separates where the dump was, okay? Did you do, did you guys bore into the ground to find out what's under that ground there?
I'm not really interested in what's in the ground.
Whether you would sustain a second story?
I, I'm not even interested. It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't matter.
A builder could build on anything.
Just pay for it and shut up.
An engineer can design anything, an architect can design anything, a builder can build anything they design.
You're just shooting from the hip, Mr. Kennas.
Oh, yeah. Like you want.
Okay. Another comment, you're not owning, you're not owning up to your first comment.
Which?
But your second comment you made, you said when reassessed, when people were asking about reassessment of homes and properties, you concluded and got up and said one-third of the residents or property taxes go up. You said one-third stay level and that one-third gets reduced.
Correct.
What, okay, enlighten me on how that works.
Why don't you figure it out?
I'm not, I'm not a tax expert. You're the one saying it. You see, and now you're trying to bait me into, yeah. You're the one, wait a second, you're getting paid 10 grand a year to answer questions. I'm coming up here volunteering. But form the advisory committee and I'll help you out how to figure that out.
I answered this, I answered it.
Okay?
I answered it.
Form the advisory committee.
Steve, let him talk.
I answered it at the last, at that meeting. I said, the, it's a, it's a township-wide assessment handled by a third party. They reassess the township.
That's right.
I said that at that meeting and you heard it.
And that is the going formula and if you even went to county tax court.
I'm tired of repeating myself to you.
Uh, I respectfully disagree with your one-third breakups. Because it probably ain't true.
Well, then what is it then? Well, why don't you tell us what it is?
Why don't you tell us what it is?
I don't know. Show me some proof.
You're making stuff.
Make a meeting, show me in, in, in writing with the group that got their taxes raised, the group that didn't and the group that lost, lost tax money.
So my, my beach just had a mandatory reassessment because their ratio was extremely low and the county finally mandated saying you put it off too long. And their formula was basically a third got raised, a third stayed the same and a third got lower. Because sometimes the assessments based on current house sales, you can bring them up. Well, in this case, some of those people got brought up too high and got lower. It was a third, a third and a third.
The assessments get readjusted. That's how it works.
Okay. All right, I'll move on. Even though I disagree with everything you say. Right now, talking about money, taxpayers' money that have, no matter what, we're going to have to spend or already spend. Thirty, $35,000 on the engineer's report and $249,000 to terminate the contract that you guys signed that gives Johnson Controls authority over tax money without any state interception. So is it true that we are in the bucket for 200, around $280,000?
Today.
Right now?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Just wanted to get to make that clear because there's been statements made that we didn't spend a dime up here. Okay. I really examined this document and I got a few. This is the one I gave you last time. Uh, this is the one you signed on the pre-development agreement with Johnson Controls. Uh, first of all, who made this document? The township or Johnson Controls?
I believe it was the Johnson Controls.
Yeah, I could just read it and see.
Will you let me talk?
Okay, go ahead.
I'm tired of you being rude to us. Enough.
Go ahead.
Reviewed by our attorneys, negotiated by our attorneys. That's how it works.
But written by Johnson Controls.
And our attorneys because there were changes made in that draft.
Correct.
Okay. I'm going to go back to recitals again and one more time, read this statement and I want to find out how you determine this. Whereas on or about the 17th day of November 2022, township, which I am assuming is the committee, determined that this project was in the best interest of the public and authorized representatives of the township to negotiate a proposed public-private partnership agreement with Johnson Controls. So I'm asking you for evidence or information on how you determine something for 30,000 employee, uh, uh, citizens, which a lot of them don't even know nothing about it. So ask me, answer me, who'd you talk to, what group, what town hall meeting? And where was the agreement from the township taxpayers that this was a good idea?
Steve, may I, may I?
Go ahead.
Steve? Sir? You're, you're concerned, it's a good, no, it's a good question. I'm going to try to answer at least some of it. And if I don't, call me out on it because I, I got thick skin.
Oh, no, no, I don't want to get.
Listen, no, I'm good, I'm good. Listen, listen. Steve, this building was built in 69. We already moved community development out onto Route 9. We have a community hall that we, we had to purchase a different one because it was falling apart. Vet work needed a roof. Every year, you know what bugs me? It's a guy's a fireman in the back of the room. I don't have to call him by his name, but he's a good man in this town. I'd like to buy a lot of fire stuff every year. Every year I've been here, and it's been about 11 years now, I'm about, about 10, 11 years. We spend, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I'd like to know how much we spent for those 11 years to upkeep these old barns with HVAC, roofing, siding, paneling, generators. It is putting good money after bed and like Deputy Mayor Kennas has said, these areas can turn into ratables and we could build something possibly, if we do it, that would make this old barn pale in comparison when you talk about, and listen, we, we had people in here that are concerned about the environment being green. I look, I look at that, but I look at the money. Talking about using a third possibly of, of electricity. Toilets that flush themselves, lights that go off as soon as you leave. No more mistakes, no more, no more false alarms with, these lights, these new buildings have that. The insulation is there. I don't like putting good money after bed every April when a mayor has to sign six figures of repairs, upkeep and maintenance that I give to that guy at a fire department.
Can I see, can I make an appointment to see these repairs and all this other stuff?
There's a lot in 10 years.
I don't care. I, I'm retired. I got all the time in the world, man. If I got to spend eight, 10 hours here, I will spend it.
It's public.
I'm already spending a lot of my personal time trying to fight what you guys are trying to do.
That's just the problem right there, the word fight. There shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a fight.
It is a fight. It is a fight because you're not doing what the will of the people want.
But we get voted into this position and we are in a position where we have to sometimes make decisions, as you can see, that always aren't going to please everybody. We're doing the best for our town. We don't, we're not up here saying, oh, listen, like you've mentioned, that we're lining our pockets. I'm not quite sure what that's about, but anyhow, we're, we're here. We've got to come as a group, make a decision of what's best for our town. Not for what's best for Steve or for this person or that person. It's what's best for our town.
I'm, I'm speaking for a lot of people, just so they know.
And I'm not saying you're not, but you know, the funny thing about this whole thing is when we started out, we weren't going to put a commission together of people, right? And you would have been one of them, Steve, but you know what? The disrespect that you have brought to every meeting you've come to with the way you talk to Veronica, the way you talk to me as women, it's disgraceful.
So you're going to punish everyone because of me?
Not punishing everyone.
There you are. There you are.
I'm letting you, I'm talking the truth. I'm talking, I'm not talking behind your back.
I never disrespected you. How did I disrespect you? Give me an example.
The tone that you use with us up here is disgraceful.
Disgraceful?
Yes, it is. Disgraceful.
All right. I'll try, I'll try to be a little nicer next time.
I have a right to my opinion.
Well, you know why, you know what? It's very frustrating to me, because you guys ain't telling me everything you know. And under the public-private partnership, by law, you're supposed to have financial transparency, which you're not. You're supposed to have town hall meetings where we have to go out and have, and alert the town what's going on. When are you gonna have a town hall meeting?
Well, the interesting thing about when you say we have to go out and alert the people, it's so interesting to me, years ago, when I was much younger, I used to come to the township meetings and sit here. Because we were interested, we were built, we had business in this town, so I would come to the meetings. And it, it was always like ten, twenty people, right? The only time we actually ever get people out is when there's an issue. We've had the chickens, we've had the geese, we've had every kind of issue you can think of. Does anybody ever come and just ask us about the bills we're paying?
Hey, it's the same thing when people go out to vote. They usually go out not to vote for you, but to not vote for him, and they'll vote anyone else in. We got an election coming up, we'll see what happens.
Make sure you take care of that too, Steve, because I know what's going on there.
I, I apologize, I disrespected you. I never, I never disrespected her.
Are you kidding me?
I'm not, it.
Are you kidding me?
I never, how did I disrespect her?
Are you blind, or? Are you kidding me?
Or how about, how about the last, you know, people should go back and watch a meeting from, if you're women, really care about women in general, okay? You should go back and watch the last meeting where he spoke and said to Amy, I, I hate to even say what he said, but I can't understand her, it's basically useless.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that. I said, I can't keep track, she talks real fast. And I asked that a committee member, oh, do an overview of what you're spending our tax money in. I come to these meetings, it's a, uh, yes, 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 and a real talk thing about it, and you move on to the next thing. I think us taxpayers deserve a better explanation, and that was my opinion. And I'm entitled to my opinion because I pay my tax.
I'm gonna deal with your question that you asked earlier on. The five of us who are elected, we made that decision to go forward.
Okay.
The five of us who are elected.
But that ain't the way it's worded.
Let's just read it again.
Whereas, on or about the seventeenth day of November two, twenty-twenty-two, township determined that this project was in the best interest.
We represent the township. That's what we're elected, we are the township committee. We are the township in that document.
That should say township committee, though.
In that document, we are the township.
It says that in here? Okay, all right. All right, well, you made, you made a decision for us without asking us. It's supposed to have public backing. If you read the public-private partnership law, anything you do under that law, which I'm assuming you're gonna use that law, it must have public backing. And I think it's inappropriate for any five people in this township, no matter who they are, to make decisions, financial hard decisions, that are gonna burden taxpayers and ultimately hurt children. Children are hurt under any financial hardships that occur in the family. Amen. Okay, I wanna move on. I wanna talk about the maintenance of the facility that you're now telling me that the township, right here it says in your recitals, three-point-two, facility maintenance plan and price. How about that? Why would they say that?
Go ahead.
Performance criteria, project company, which should say, and the attorney should've had changed to say Johnson Controls. But they masked it by saying, "project company."
Oh, you're an attorney.
Project company will provide preliminary management plans, budgets, and a financial pro-form for the long-term facility maintenance services to be provided for the project.
That is correct, that can happen, and we did ask them to price that out as an option, but it is not something that we're looking to move forward with. We are looking to move forward with maintaining the building under the same circumstances.
That's right, just ignore her, don't even look at her, that's all right.
Yeah, he's not rude.
Real respectful. Don't even look at her, just ignore her, that's all right. She's not even here.
I'm listening to her.
Yeah, you're listening. How about look at her, yeah?
You can't tell me where to look.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, I'll look wherever I want. That doesn't mean.
We're talking and you're looking at me respectful, but every time she talks, you look down at your paper, look the other way. Real respectful. Real respectful.
I'm multitasking.
Yeah, you can multitask.
Look in the mirror, huh?
Yeah, that's right.
All right, now I'm to negotiations on this. It says the pre-development services under this agreement does not include any work performed pursuant to the public-private agreement. So, here Johnson ropes you into this agreement that's outside of the public-private rules, and you're gonna spend a lot of tax money under this agreement, and it can't be contested if we complain to the state.
No, that's not true.
That's not true? That's the way it worded, that's the way.
I can remember specifically.
Go ahead.
Hold on, let me finish.
I'll be quiet.
Uh, when we had this meeting to go over it, that Mr. Dasty was sitting right beside me, and they, and him and the attorney, their attorney, went back and forth on this and made a change to the contract. So, it's not true. Yes, we, we can sue them, they can sue us. Now, originally it wasn't set up that we can't.
Okay. Couple last questions, and then I'll move on. Um, have you had any meetings with Johnson Controls recently?
No.
Nothing? Have you determined what the bottom-line number is that you're willing to have the taxpayers pay for this new municipality?
No, we're still, we're still planning.
You have no number?
We're still planning this, Steve, we're still in the planning stage.
I thought, I thought Johnson proposed eighty-two million, is that true?
No.
Excuse me?
No, that's not true.
What was the number?
The high number before we finalized, we said it was eighty million. That was the high number, and that was assuming that they were gonna, they were gonna do the maintenance and all of that. So, all that needs to be backed out.
Well, I don't, I, you know, when I read a contract, and this is signed, it does say that Johnson is gonna develop the maintenance services. So, you could back out of that?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Because we haven't signed the final document.
So, as, as, as.
Everything is negotiable on this, everything.
As the committee stands, since no union president's here for the township workers, and some of them are my friends, you're saying that the township workers will maintain even when you build a new complex?
Yes.
Because we wouldn't be able to lay them off anyways, because they only.
Can you change your mind on that?
I've never changed my mind, though, Steve.
Yeah, we don't, we wouldn't be able to lay those individuals off, because they don't only, nobody is just solely assigned to our buildings, there are other maintenance issues that need to be done. The parks that they maintain, the buildings that they maintain, they don't just maintain the municipal building, and that's their only job. So, I wouldn't be able to lay those individuals off because I have Johnson Controls maintaining our municipal building.
How many?
There's those savings of that.
How many hours a week are put in to maintain in this property?
This prop, in the building, I believe the gentleman who maintains this building probably spends three hours a day in this building, and then he's assigned other jobs and other duties. And then you have an individual that's assigned to the police department, that has other jobs and other duties. Then you have an individual that's assigned to our public buildings and the community development building. And then, of course, when our parks are in full bloom, they have to maintain all the parks and the beach bathhouses.
So, how many total hours per day?
Each of those three gentlemen that are assigned work a forty-hour work week.
So, a hundred-and-twenty hours a week?
For three individuals.
Okay, a hundred-and-twenty hours a week, okay.
But not only for the buildings.
Not just for the buildings.
Well, you gotta cut the grass, you gotta put the.
No, they don't, those gentlemen don't cut the grass, that's another group of people. We have three people that are called building maintenance workers that maintain our buildings and our facilities.
Okay. I wanna, I wanna, uh, the committee to explain why on August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, did the committee authorize among themselves to enter into a cooperative purchasing agreement when in April of twenty-twenty-three, this committee accepted and signed the agreement for the pre-development services that includes steep financial penalties if the township backs out of Johnson Controls' contract? Why was it necessary on August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, to agree to enter into a cooperative purchasing, purchasing agreement?
That was to purchase police cars.
Yeah, we entered into the cranberry cooperative purchasing agreement to purchase.
So, that had nothing to do with Johnson Controls?
Absolutely not.
So, again, you're not providing the taxpayers enough information. I can't understand what that young lady says. I'm sorry, I got nothing against you, okay? I love everyone.
Steve, right after that meeting, I.
Even people I don't like.
I read about a five-minute of what, what took place in that meeting. We had a caucus meeting, which we entered into the cooperative to buy the police cars. I think we paid some bills, and then we went down into executive session. The co-op was always to buy cheaper police cars. That's what it was.
All right, before I, before I sit down.
Steve, one second, let me just add on to that. So, basically, if you would ever come to a budget meeting, we have them every year, where we determine our, let me finish, let me finish, where we determine our budget as well as our capital expenditures, that's when we discuss at length what we're going to buy, what building improvements, what park improvements, so on and so forth. So, you know, you only started coming a couple of months ago, you've never seen you, in twenty years, I've never seen you.
How do you know I wasn't here?
Yeah, well, I, I've been here twenty years.
You've been out here twenty years?
I've been on this council committee for twenty years.
And as a taxpayer, I could come and go as I pleased, right?
Well, I, I mean, at a meeting, at a meeting.
All right, well, listen, I understand, I understand what you're saying. Go ahead, finish.
Let me finish. I'm answering your question. You made an accusation that we went into.
I asked the question.
That then at the same time, we did something with Johnson Controls. So, what I'm trying to say is, every year we have a budget meeting, okay? A series of them, where we determine the budget based on expenditures of insurance, so on and so forth. And then we also set aside money for capital expenditures, whether it be gear for the fire companies, police cars, cars for public works, you name it. So, that's when we discussed it, and all we were doing when we did that was memorializing the fact that we were gonna buy police cars. So, this is a long process. We don't just wake up and decide we're gonna buy police cars.
Okay.
Okay?
I, I understand, but I'll give you a recommendation in your next budget meeting.
Yeah.
Put a nice big illuminated sign out front, and chronologically post all meetings that the township's gonna have. It's very important, a lot of people don't know what goes on up here.
It goes up on our website.
And we publicize, by law, we have to advertise each meeting.
You got them on your website.
And we, we, wait, we publicize.
That's not the only way you can advertise. To be truly transparent, you should have a big sign out there and chronologically announce every meeting that this committee is gonna have, and you would increase a lot of participation that everyone doesn't go running to the township website. All right, thank you for your time, I'll be at next meeting.
Can't wait.
Thank you, thanks for your time. Any, any other comments tonight? This gentleman back here in the back row.
Let's see what he has to say.
Give me a minute.
Take your time. Take your time. If you, if you wanna grab, if you, sir, if you wanna grab that mic and sit down.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
You pull it out and sit, have a seat.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. Name?
You know, it's funny, I can't hear.
Your name, please.
I can't hear you back there.
Your name.
Ed Smol, and I live in Pheasant Run.
Okay.
Just two things I'd like to bring up. Uh, a while back, we had a referendum on that road. The, uh, the rail tra, rail trail. And it passed. It took a few years before we got it done, but it's a wonderful road.
Thank you.
Well, we voted on it, it cost a lot of money. Now, I understand that we need a new building. This is questionable, but why don't we just? Let me rephrase. We're spending eighty million dollars. Why don't we just put it on a referendum? Ask the people what they think, let them vote on it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you for your time. Any other comments?
Thank you.
You're not supposed to just sit there and beat shit.
Uh, Richard Bidnick, um.
Hold on, can we, can we, sure we can hear Mr. Bidnick?
Uh, good evening, mayor and council, citizens of Lacey. Couple things first, before I go into my prepared notes. I think I addressed this just recently about the way this body addresses the public. I'm gonna remind you, Mr. Mayor, that you are an employee of the people who are here. It's sad that I have to come up here and address and explain to you that how heated the individual may get, you are to remain calm. That is your job. You're the, supposed to be the adult in the room. I don't appreciate how passionate someone may be, especially about money that may, they may have to pay for something that they may not want, that you need to keep this end and this body in control. And I've asked you this once before, and now I'm bringing it up again. We talk about respect, you're not gonna get any respect by screaming at somebody from that aisle. In fact, you lost respect from a lot of people tonight by doing that. So, there's been a lot of misinformation that's been given out there by this body, or stonewalling, as you may say, that has really may have, um, added to the heat of a war that is brewing. And now I will begin my official comments. Anger is the biggest impetus for change. This statement is the topic I choose to address this evening, because from what I'm seeing and hearing, and this meeting in particular, the township committee is creating a lot of anger. Mr. Kennis, with all due respect, I do want an explanation of your comments that you made at the Pheasant Rub Clubhouse meeting on Tuesday night, when you said that Mr. Rossi, Mr. Bowe, and myself were all speaking half-truths concerning the proposed Johnson Controls municipal complex. Are you, sir, calling us liars?
I was, I was saying you have half-truths, and you're, you're misrepresenting some of the things that, I don't know, you didn't, I said it before, a hundred million dollars is a number that we never set up here, and we've never up, uh, said that we're talking about a pool. Maybe behind the scenes or some of these things have come up, but not publicly. So, you're, the numbers you're using are ma, are not true.
I didn't mention any numbers when we were at the meeting.
I didn't, uh, whoever, one, you did, somebody did, I don't have tape of it. It's been bandied about, every time Mr. Bowe, he's coming up here many times and bandied about the number a hundred million, a hundred-and-twenty million. I think on Gavin, the name of the website, like, between a hundred and two-hundred million. That's all made up.
Okay. I see that our township manager and our mayor will be presenting at the League of Municipalities Annual Conference down at Atlantic City on November fourteenth the following program. Is a P-three right-for-your-infrastructure-project a case study? When I first saw this, I had to laugh, because quite frankly, I thought this has gotta be a joke. Okay? The way that you have handled this whole project, I mean, I'm almost tempted to come to this meeting and actually speak to the members that will be there, and I can explain to them, as a taxpayer, how this has been handled. And it hasn't been handled very well. In fact, I would be embarrassed to be going up there and speaking about, is a P-three right-for-your-infrastructure-project a case study? It should be how to do this the wrong way. We know, we're doing it right now. I'm sorry that I have to, to, to say this, but honestly, I think it's a disgrace.
Well, the state of New Jersey reached out to myself.
I'm not questioning that, I'm just saying, in all honesty, the way that this has been handled is an embarrassment, okay? So, four. Well, actually, because, let me read this, because I didn't go. Because in my view, let's see, you might wanna retitle this program as to not how to do a P-three infrastructure project a case study. Because in my view, the way this entire proposal has been handled is so poor, and the process of building any public support has long passed. The lack of transparency, the stonewalling, the lack of forthright responses to citizens' questions and requests for information have made this into a debacle, a political debacle caused by this body. At this point, I don't see how it would even be possible to build any public support for this project. The damage has already been done. Sadly, the public has lost faith in this body dealing with this project. Four. The one thing I've come to realize, after all these years of being a community activist, is that my government officials do not represent me, or my interests for that matter. I've pondered this question, and I think it really is time for us to reconsider what type of a government body do we really want in Lacey Township? Do we want a government body that doesn't care how we feel, that doesn't listen to our concerns, who does not whatever it wants and just feels that we should pay the bills with absolutely no say? It's probably time for us to evolve to a different type of government structure. We need a more representative form of government to represent the citizens of Lacey Township. Getting rid of Democrat versus Republican versus Independent, because we are all in this together, and those issues, those party issues really don't have much play in our local government. But with a representative type of government, we could have legislative districts or wards, where we would have an actual delegate who is elected to represent our interests on the Government Township Committee. Something new and radical must be done, because surely what we have now is not working. This whole municipal complex ordeal has made me realize that we have absolutely no say, and that no one cares about the average citizen in our community. You realize there are about thirty thousand individuals who live in Lacey Township at this point. Our mayor and council surround themselves mostly with the friends and family group. But the mass majority of those thousands of people but the mass majority of those thousands of people, they will never come in contact with or even speak to, yet they are making decisions that are going to impact all of us and future generations in a very negative way. I think it's time that we as citizens take back our government and make it representative of the diversity of our community. I've been studying the Faulkner, Faulkner Act. It actually was through this process that early in nineteen seventies, the government body was changed from just having three township committeemen to the five that we have now with the mayor that is appointed by the government body. Wouldn't it make more sense to have an actual elected mayor and a delegate of committeemen who are representative of the districts that they represent? This way, we would have a representative who we could go to, actually, who represents our individual needs in our section of our town. I found that a government that is in tune with the electorate that it represents is much more effective than one that does not listen and just thinks that it knows better than everyone else, and what is best for the citizens of our town. This is easy to happen when one becomes isolated in the ivory tower of politics. This is not how democracy works, and something must be done. I do have some proposals that I think you should probably look at because, let me rephrase this, I do have some proposals that I think you probably would get some public support for moving forward with issues at hand. One, my suggestion is you have the town manager come up with a five-year plan of maintenance requirements for the current facility that are absolute necessities. Two, start planning for the future by expanding your information infrastructure by digitalizing all the documents that you can and start allowing employees to work remotely. Three, begin plans for a transition of moving the police department to the Knights of Columbus Building, which is much better centrally located than our current police department, and making the necessary adjustments. No need to expand the current police department building. And six, on a final note, start looking at ways that you can reduce our tax burden and not increase it. You call yourselves fiscal conservatives, but actions in the end speak louder than words. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Kevin, come on down.
Forker River. Pete.
Yes, sir.
And everyone else has ever made the statements, you are not buying me anything. Okay? I do not have a fire truck titled in my name purchased by you parked in my driveway. Okay? So, to keep saying that you're buying me something is wrong. What you are doing is you are placing fire trucks that you own, that you don't replace when you're supposed to, okay, that are out there to protect the residents of this township. I do not own anything. You're not buying me anything. Okay? So, we need to get that rec, put straight. Anytime I come up here and give you a hard time about budgets and when you're supposed to replace fire trucks, and when you do buy one, stop making the statements that you're buying it for me. I come up here and give you a hard time because you don't replace the equipment when you're supposed to. Okay? So, you're not buying me anything. Okay? The residents are the ones you're buying for because it's protecting their lives and their property.
Understood, but I think you know what I meant.
But, yes, but you make the statement that you're buying me something, and people have made the statement, oh, we're buying him a fire truck. You're not buying me a fire truck.
Got it.
Okay? I just want to get the record straight on that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you for your comment. Any, any other comments in the public tonight?
Seeing that most of the calls are floor. Oh, does not.
Okay. Okay. Just state your name, please.
Hi, I'm Jo Faccioli.
Jo, can you do me a favor? Can you spell your last name for me?
You don't want to try it?
F-A-C.
F-A-C-C. I-O-L-L-I.
Okay.
A lot of, a lot of vowels.
That's okay.
I'm from Pheasant Run as well. I have several things that, please forgive me, I'm a senior citizen and I might not get the dates or the facts correct, but I find it disheartening for Veronica, and I'm sorry that you said it, but I find it disheartening that you could sit there and say that we've got broken windows in this building.
Jo, can you just tilt the mic down?
Help her, help her with that.
Bernie. Help her with that.
Oh, I'm not that small. That there's broken windows in this building for years.
The glass is not broken.
Still, it's not replaced. When I have a broken window in my house, I make sure I replace it. Not only am I going to lose heat and air conditioning, but it devalues my house. Okay? So, that's one point I wanted to make. The other point I wanted to make is I'm in this town thirty-eight years. I have a lot of friends, some of them on the dais here, some of them not. But I found it disheartening that my friends and neighbors don't know anything about this municipal building. My children, who, and actually, I found the information on Lacey Chatter. I did not find it. I don't peruse the website except to see my taxes. So, you're saying that people, this whole town, should come into this building and come to these meetings and sit through a lot of other issues that are going on in town to find out that there's a municipal building proposed for this town, and the people in this town don't know about it? My children have raised their children here, and they don't know about it. My neighbors are here because we did have Mr. Rossi and Steve and Rich come to our Pheasant Run Clubhouse to explain to us what's going on because we're concerned as taxpayers. Now, Mr. Dykoff, you've been at our clubhouse many times. Re-election, for other things. Why haven't you come to our clubhouse to talk to us about this municipal building?
You know, that, we normally don't, but let me explain something to you. You elect the five of us to run this township and do what's best for the township, and we collectively, and there are a lot of things that we do that you don't know about, the day-to-day operations. People would be amazed at what it takes to run a municipality, what the, what the employees do, whether it's the police department, volunteer fire company, DPW, Public Works, the tax collector, tax assessor. Every year, and I mentioned it to the gentlemen, every year, we have a budget meeting, and at that budget meeting, we discuss the budget. We also spend, how much did we spend in, in capital expenditures this year?
I think three million.
When was the budget, when was the budget meeting?
We start them in February, and they usually finish up early March, and then the budget is introduced, it's two readings like an ordinance, introduced late March, early April with a public hearing thirty days later.
Okay, so was the municipal building part of the budget?
Well, what happens is, so a, a, a capital improvement plan is presented to the government body. It is a multi-page plan. It's streets, you know, as Mr. Dykoff says, streets, roads, parks, playgrounds, building infrastructure, vehicles, those things are presented. And then, knowing what we're able to afford to bond and what we can afford for payback period, then we pick and choose which projects we're going to bond each year. So, a lot of times, the, the infrastructure to this building, whether it's the roof or the replacement of all the windows, doesn't take priority over police cars, and maybe we get a grant to pave a road, so we're paving roads, so that it's, it's picked upon that way as to what we're going to put our money in and invest our money in each year.
Or, 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 let me, yeah, let me continue on what I was discussing, HVAC, things like that. Everyone is focused on the, the municipal building. Well, that's only a small part of it.
I am, I am.
Well, we've got a police department, we, we're, a big chunk of that money is for an indoor recreation center. I believe, we talk about for our children, someone mentioned our children. If we were to build an indoor recreation center, not only would it be a revenue generator, I've got a little bit of experience with recreation, it would be a tremendous revenue generator. We are looking towards the future of Lacey Township. Everything we do, whether we pave a road, whether we build a building, whether we renovate a park, whether we replace the, the jungle gym at Gilly Park with the new surface, these are all because we, we want to maintain the, the level of, of life.
I under, I understand.
That, that people have become accustomed. And I'm, I speak to a lot of people as well, and I mentioned it the last time I was at the meeting, that, you know, we're all residents, we're all taxpayers as well. I've got an extended family just like you, I've got my daughter, I've got cousins, brother-in-laws, sister-in-laws. So, everyone's focusing on, on this building and renovating it, but as I mentioned before, and, and was mentioned, the police department was built in the sixties. When we had, how many police?
Six.
Mr. Snyder probably said it better than I.
Twenty.
Twenty, back in the sixties when we first started, okay. We've got double that. We're not in compliance.
Probably more like.
Bernie, are we in compliance?
You were out of compliance.
The day it opened.
In sixty-nine.
Okay, in sixty-nine. This courtroom, out of compliance. You know, there are a lot of, lot of recommendations here about split shifts and things like that, putting trailers for the police department. That, that's, that's one of the most ridiculous things I've ever heard. Can you imagine having our police officers work in a trailer? And they said, they, someone made the, the association at schools. I guarantee you that, no, I would guess that you no longer have students in trailers after what the society has become. So, yeah, have I come to Pheasant Run? No, I haven't, you know, has, have people come here and, and, and questioned? Now, another, another thing, we televise our meetings. Many municipalities don't televise their meetings. So, we give opportunities for the, the residents to see what we do. You know, so, so that's how we try and get the message out.
And you may, and you may, in the future, you might need a new municipal building, you might need a new police station. I agree.
No, we need a police station now.
I've been in the police station.
We need it now.
I know it's small. I've been there with the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, and everybody else, and I know that's small. The thing is, it's like, it's like everyday life. If you keep something, and I don't want to say that you're, you're pushing it under the rug, but a lot of people in this town don't know what's going on. You could say it's our fault, but I'm going to say it's your fault. I'm going to say that you ca, you didn't come to us or what, so, excuse me, excuse me, Jo. I'm sorry, Peggy. What other organizations have you been to to try to roll this out in a way where it doesn't seem like you're trying to pull the rug out from under us?
So, that's what I wanted, I just want to touch on that for a minute, Jo, and I'm just going to, this is from me, this is not five of us, this is from me personally. Did we go about this, maybe we should have done it a little differently? I'm, I'll take responsibility, you're absolutely right. But the problem with something like this, okay, is it, it's a decision that we're given by being elected. I'm just going through this process, right? So, we're elected to be up here and make these kind of decisions, all right? Everybody thinks that we should put it out there. It, and, and again, some of you might think that way, but I'm just going to say that no one takes the time to understand that all that costs a lot of money to put it out there? You have no idea how much it would cost to put it on a referendum. Okay, it's, it's ridiculous what they charge us to do that for, and in the big picture of things, yes, we, we might have, I'm, I'm taking it on my shoulders. We might not have done this the right way, and maybe should have gone to you guys, maybe should have gone here, and maybe should have gone there. But you know what? We're not perfect. Okay? We're, we're not perfect, and we didn't do this purposely as some people have, no, excuse me. Have some people have accusations at. We didn't purposely try to hide this. It's just that it was a, we stepped in and we said, we know what needs to be done, and we know it's not going to make everybody happy, but we still know it needs to be done.
But it doesn't need to be done with a third party. Does it need to be done with, and do we have to be the first town in New Jersey to do it?
Okay, so I'm going to just, okay, just let me talk about that for a second. So, other places that haven't done it with this third party, I'm just going to say this to you, and I'm not going to mention the towns' names because I don't want to put them in that spot, but there are four towns in this Ocean County that have already built, already built, what they thought they needed, and guess what? They've outgrown what they thought they needed already. Okay? I'm, it's not like, it's, it's not like we said, oh, boy, we got to build this building and charge our taxpayers, and we got to do this. We've learned from their mistakes somewhat. We've seen what these other towns have done, and they're in trouble because they've already outgrown what they built.
Now, you said you heard about this on, you read it on Chatter.
I did, I read it on.
Now, then you know that I'm very active on Chatter.
I'm very.
And anytime there is a question, or I'm, I'm very forthcoming in discussing it openly, as long as it's done in a respectful way. We're doing the best we can to get the word out. I think that's a better way to get the word out through social media.
I think we're doing a better job of getting the word out.
Well, okay. Well, maybe you should move the county committee. Might be a good idea.
Mr. Kennis, you own a home in Pheasant Run. You never thought once to come to our meetings.
I have, this has been, I've discussed this.
You're a homeowner.
I've discussed this on, on and off, then, whenever I've been at Pheasant Run, this has come up in conversation.
That's the first time I've ever seen your face.
No, no, I've been in Pheasant Run.
Yes, yes. The first time I've seen.
Richie Rom, can you back me up on this? That is not the first time I've been in Pheasant Run.
It's not the first time.
No.
It happened for an election, though.
That's right. I don't, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to talk anymore. It's late, everybody's tired, I'm tired. I just want to say, perhaps you should take a step back, and maybe you should roll it out a different way.
Well.
Or, I'm wondering if you've interviewed or tried to partner up with someone who doesn't have such a terrible reputation as Johnson Controls. That's another.
We, well, we had, we had another contract in quoted. Now, keep in mind, we've been working on this for how many years?
A long time.
Twenty-twenty.
At a minimum.
At a minimum. You know, you know how much longer we're going to be looking at? Two, three years? At least.
Like, how much money are you going to spend to look at this?
This is, this is not, well, as we go along and it becomes more and more feasible, that's when we, unfortunately, when the design comes out, listen, no one works for free. No one's going to do it, say, okay, you know, they, if they are skin in the game, they're going to expect they're paid, but we're looking, it was funny, we were talking to a young woman at Johnson Controls, last year, we had a public meeting, and I was mayor. She says, I wonder how many mayors I'm going to go through before this happens? Three, you know, three. So, this is a very slow process. Mr. Bowe keeps on wanting answers to questions. We don't have them. We're not breaking ground tomorrow. You know, we're talking about, you know, several years before we even get near that point. So, it's not like we're rushing this.
Okay, we're not rushing this by any stretch. I mean, look how long the light.
But it should be, it should be a little bit more transparent, a little bit more out there.
Were you here last meeting?
I was.
So, I, you, my comments were about the traffic light on Haynes Street. I saved that article still. We started that, our engineering study, this article is dated from the Southern Ocean Times, we started, the, the first engineering study on March seventh, two thousand fifteen. We never stopped working on it.
What was the price then, Steve? What was the price then?
The price then, right, the price then, it's in here, between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
And guess what? We're paying five hundred and fifty thousand for the same light now.
Okay, well, I said my piece. I hope you listened to the people.
Thank you. Thank you for being respectful. We appreciate that.
Any other comments?
No, no. No motion.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I got a comment.
Wait, wait, let this lady talk.
Bernie, or you go home.
What time?
I'm next, Bernie.
Nine-thirty.
All right. My name is March Turner. I want to say that every time I appear here with a question, my questions have been answered. I have no problem with anybody on this board.
Thank you.
So, going to keep this pretty short. We're all taxpayers here, we see a federal government that's run out of control with a two trillion dollar deficit. We're looking at the state of New Jersey, that can't get enough money from us, and as you pointed out at the last meeting, Mayor, we don't get a dime back from New Jersey. All right? So, we can't get any help there. Okay? So, Democratic president, Democratic governor here, we get nothing. Okay? So, we say, okay, Republican town, here we go. Registered Republican, here I am. I'm looking at a Republican body here, and I'm listening to somebody who says, I'm a builder, we build, we don't care, I'm not putting lipstick on a pig. Okay? Give me a thirty-five million dollar lipstick on a pig police station and rebuild building here rather than whatever you're proposing there with a recreation center and God knows what else. Okay? Because I just don't see this being good for us.
And again, that's just a small number, just so you know, that, that, when we say thirty-five million for just that, you know, that isn't even touching the whole ballgame. Okay? Because that's just opening the door and getting started. It, this, you just, the thing is, I didn't know either until I got here in this spot. There are so many things that we have to answer to. It's not like we can just put a wall up over here.
It just doesn't happen that way, and the money, and the paperwork, and everything that's involved in it is just not as easy as everybody out there thinks.
Nothing is as easy as anybody thinks, all right? And I want to say, the building on the community center, we were talking about $2.9 million we were going to get from that building, 2.9 because it was going up for auction, we got 1.5, okay?
Well, the appraisal came in at $2 million when we first got the appraisal. We, as a governing body, said let's... We're being a little greedy. We were trying to take advantage of the high market. Obviously, the market didn't call for 3 million, so that's why we listed it for 3.
Right.
It really should have been listed for, like, $2 million, exactly what the appraisal called for. But we said, oh, let's see, the market's going crazy, the TD Bank across the street, that property sold for 6 million, let's see if we can grab some of that money. Obviously, it wasn't there, so that's why the price got lowered.
I get it. So we still, looking at a $2 million valuation, we got 75% of that, okay? So we were off then. What tax money are we going to get from this?
It depends on what's built there as to what it's going to be assessed at.
So we have no idea?
He's looking for a tenant right now, some viable tenant to be there that would be compliant with the C-150 commercials.
Right, so we have no idea what tax money that's going to bring in?
Not until we know what he's going to build.
Right, okay. Then aren't we going to be in the same situation here where you're saying that we can sell this property, and it's commercial property or whatever, and we can get ratables? How do we know what we're going to get for this property?
We don't until the time you're ready to list it, and if the market's calling for it.
So there's nothing said, everything is guesswork, guesswork, but we know, we have a deputy mayor who says, I'm hell-bent on building because this is what I do. I'm not putting lipstick on a pig.
I, yeah, I don't, I said it before, I don't, I think it's a waste of money putting substantial amounts of money, which that would be, especially on a police station, on a property that we should be collecting property taxes from. If you were starting the town from scratch and you wanted the buildings in this location, the best you would hope for, everything would be pushed back at least 300 or 400 feet so you can maintain this as commercial property. That's really the impetus of it.
And what about when we do the affordable housing here? The builders come in, they do that, and what tax money do we get from all this affordable housing?
Well, the affordable housing is state mandated, we get, so that project is a pilot, is a pilot, they pay taxes. I mean, they all pay taxes.
There's no property taxes?
They don't pay school taxes.
Oh, I didn't know. That's why I'm asking you, because I don't know. But they do pay taxes on that?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, because I've heard that builders get a break and whoever owns it doesn't get, doesn't pay taxes on it for so many years.
Thank the state of New Jersey. I mean, that's, you know...
Thank the state of New Jersey for that, too.
Yeah, the condos over on Route 9, the preserve at Barnegat Bay, I think there's 13 units that have to be, they're for-sale units that have to be listed to qualify for affordable, affordable income eligible persons, but they pay property taxes.
Yeah, they all pay property taxes.
And then when, if you're income eligible and you move into it and you can afford, you know, you have that income level in those guidelines, if you were to turn around and resell it, you can only resell it back again for the affordable. So if I'm one of those people that could afford, that fall into the $90,000 to buy that condo, I can't turn around and sell it through a fee of $350 that the people that can afford it are buying it for. It still always has to be maintained as an affordable. Now, builders also have the option, instead of building the affordables, is to give money in lieu of that, that goes into what is called an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which helps us do some of the rehabs that we're doing on some units throughout the town. I do believe there's some of your residents that have benefited from new doors, windows, roofs, HVAC throughout the community, plus it helps us, again, help Walters Development Group. We bought all that land over there because the town has to have a buy-in and a component. So we bought that land so that Walters can build the final 70 units that we need to meet our old rules.
Let me just add one thing about the building. I said this a couple of minutes ago, too. You know, our budget is usually made up of, you know, taxpayer money, state aid, and a lot of it, a good portion of it comes from added assessments. Added assessments is another word for building. And in 2019, our added assessments were about $38 million, and as of September this year, it's about $24 million. That's a big drop-off from that time. And the township, we could argue about how much the town has to grow, but it has to grow.
All right, I've said my piece.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make it quick, Bernie.
I just got two questions. One, what'd you mean by lipstick on a pig?
Building shot.
Okay.
The other, the other one is, from the last three meetings I've been to, the biggest complaint I hear, and I've gone, I've gone to Pheasant Run, spoke to the people up there, they wanted a history on vet work and that, and it led into this new building and that. I told them what I knew. Tonight, I'm hearing a different story from two meetings ago. You know, it doesn't, it isn't following the same line, you know? There is a lack of communications here. It's sad. You know, in the police department, the junior man got all the dirty work. Who's junior man up there?
That's me.
Not criticizing women or anything, but somebody has to go out and talk to the people. Somebody's got to make arrangements, somebody's got to let them know what's going on. We don't have a local newspaper like we used to, where everybody got it and read it, and they knew what was going on. There were articles in there about everything, everybody was kept up to date. Most of the people with computers, I don't know how to, I'm computer illiterate.
Yeah, I see your post on there all the time.
Yeah, you know how long it takes me to put a post on there?
And basically, you know...
And you criticize me all the time about my spelling.
And also sending, you know, you were doing, you were doing just fine on the computer.
Oh, you're talking about those letters.
Spreading, spreading the...
I didn't, I didn't author them, I just...
Okay.
They were dictated.
Can I go home now?
No. The other thing is to the attorney, on the forked act that he was talking about, and the elected mayor, and, don't we have to, sometime when the population goes to a certain level, like 30,000, don't we have to step up to, not saying, I mean, it's up to us, but aren't there other things, too, in the town that we got to step up to?
Liquor licenses.
Liquor licenses, that's correct. That's based on population.
But not a form of government.
The police department...
You would be restricted in a type of form of government based on population for some forms of government, but you're not required to change it by population.
Well, wouldn't it make sense with the size that we're growing to? You know, you look at a town like Beechwood that has elected mayor of seven people.
Correct.
Right? We're way bigger than they are. They got like about 16 or 17, I don't even think they have that.
Right.
You know, that'd eliminate a big problem here.
Bernie, no, it wouldn't, and let me explain, I'm going to explain to you why.
Yeah, there are pros and cons of every, almost every form of government. There are a lot of borough forms of government in Ocean County, there are many, most of them are the smaller kinds. But you can look to some other towns, like Stafford, for instance, where the entire governing body is elected in one election.
Right.
There's obviously problems with continuity when you have elections like that, possibly. Mr. Bidnick brought up about wards. Toms River, I think, has wards, am I correct? I don't know whether there are many others that have wards.
Berkeley.
Berkeley, Berkeley has wards, but there are some drawbacks to wards, too, because while in one instance you have individuals that know their sections of the community, it can also be more contentious, especially if they're elected, be like me, that represents a ninth legislative district that zealously represents their district to the extent that I don't care about the rest of the state, that I care about the ninth district, which causes fits and starts with all the other legislators, perhaps in their districts. If you had zoning issue going in one particular town, where a commercial zone might be in a specific ward, if you wanted to change that zoning, you might have pushback or fighting from that particular individual based on that representation in that area. So there are, there are pros and cons, and so that's why a lot of times, there's a study commission that would be formed before a municipality entertains changing their charter or their form of government. And some of them are still pretty much, there are still several towns in Ocean County that have only three members of the governing body. Your neighboring Ware Town.
Where?
Ware Town, Beechhaven, I believe, is still, yeah, Ware.
So Bernie, the nice thing, our form of government, the nice thing I like about it, we have five equal votes. If you have a strong mayor, weak council, the mayor basically has all the power.
The thing I don't like about it...
And basically, he can really steer the township in his own direction, whereas we have five separate votes, and I'll guarantee we have five different minds.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
The thing I don't like about it, it isn't divided up equally within the town.
How do you figure that?
Well, all five of you guys can live in Pheasant Run. And all of a sudden, Pheasant Run gets their, not bad-mouthing Pheasant Run now, but they will get new roads paved every three years, the snowplowed first one out of the box. You know how it works, come on.